Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Education. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach the dais. I repeat, no one is to approach the dais. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Rita Joseph of the Committee on Education. Thank you for joining us today for this hearing on legislation. We will hear 11 pieces of legislation, including Intro 118 sponsored by Deputy Speaker Ayala, a local law in relation to reporting on dress code policies in New York City public schools. Intro 266 sponsored by myself, a local law in relation to establishing a bullying prevention task force. Intro 399 sponsored by Public Advocate Williams, a local law in relation to requiring the Department of Education to provide information, requiring schools' compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Intro 432 sponsored by Councilmember Sanchez, a local law in relation to distributing information about after-school programs. Intro number 577 sponsored by Councilmember Dinowitz, a local law in relation to requiring the Department of Education to conduct a study on feasibility of installing green roofs on schools. Intro 733 sponsored by Councilmember Stevens, a local law in relation to requiring the New York City Public Schools, New York City Department of Education to report information on career and technical education program in New York City public schools. Intro number 771 sponsored by Councilmember Lee, a local law in relation to requiring distribution of information regarding phone interpretation services. Intro 797 sponsored by Councilmember Stevens, a local law in relation to reporting on student clubs and organizations. Resolution 95 sponsored by Councilmember Hanif, a resolution calling upon the New York City Department of Education to consult with faith-based organizations to develop and provide all grade levels with a curriculum that focuses on religious diversity, to provide professional development focused on religious diversity for teachers, staff, and administrators, to ensure accurate classification of hate crimes in annual school reports, immediate notification, and full disclosure to parents of hate crime statistics, and to ensure that schools take actions to condemn bullying harassment based on religious clothing, food requirement, and need for prayer space and time year-round. Resolution 292 sponsored by Councilmember Stevens, a resolution calling on the New York City public schools to create an inclusive school dress code that complies with Title IX of Federal Education Amendment Act and account for diverse cultures, gender expression, and body diversity. Lastly, we will hear number 372 sponsored by myself, a resolution calling on the New York City public schools to provide students support for student newspaper at every high school. Thank you to the advocates and members of the public who are joining us today, and thank you to the representative from the administration for joining us. I would like to thank the Education Committee, staff, as well as my own staff, for all of the work they put in today. I'd like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today that you must fill out a witness slip, which is located on the desk of the Sergeant-at-Arms near the entrance of this room, even if you were already registered in advance. Please indicate on the witness slip whether you're here to testify in favor or in opposition to a bill or multiple bills. I also want to point out that we will not be voting on any of this legislation today. To allow as many people as possible to testify, testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you're testifying on Zoom or in person. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to limit their question and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses who are here in person will testify before those on Zoom. Now, I'd like to turn the floor over to, she's not here, the next, I'd like to turn the floor over to Public Advocate Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. My name is Shemani Williams, and I'm a public advocate for the city of New York. I'd like to thank Chair Joseph and the members of the Committee on Education for holding this important hearing. In August of last year, advocates for children found that only 31.1% of New York City schools are fully accessible for people with disabilities. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires that governments ensure people with disabilities have equal access to public programs and services, including public education. However, many students with disabilities are barred from attending the neighborhood schools because of inaccessible infrastructure. This not only means that these students are unable to fully access their communities, but that they must travel to an accessible school, which may mean hours on a bus every day, cutting into their learning time. Students are also prohibited from participating in after-school programs unless there is someone to provide transportation home after, because the school buses will not bring them home. This lack of accessibility also means that students, families, and community members with accessibility needs are unable to attend events and meetings at these schools. Advocates for Children has called for $1.25 billion to be allocated for improving school accessibility to bring another 150 to 200 school buildings to full accessibility by 2029. However, in the proposed FY25 budget, the School Construction Authority has only designated 800,000 for improving accessibility, only 0.064% of the advocates' requested funding. Every year that we do not meaningfully prioritize making school buildings accessible is another year that students cannot attend the school of their choice or spend valuable instructional time traveling to a school that can accommodate them. Today, one of the bills we're hearing is my bill, Intro 399, which will require the Department of Education to report annually on the degree to which indoor and outdoor school facilities comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Additionally, this bill would make public the contact information for schools' ADA coordinator, the protocol for requesting an accommodation, and information regarding the extent which his own schools have the capacity to accommodate students and employees with disabilities. It has been more than 35 years, sorry, more than 30 years since the ADA has signed into law, was signed into law, yet New Yorkers with disabilities are still barred from entering and attending many schools. I want to thank the Chair for holding this hearing and including my bill in it. With that, I say thank you.
Thank you, Public Advocate Williams. I'd like to acknowledge the following council members: Councilmember Narcisse, Councilmember Dinowitz, Lee, Stevens, Public Advocate Williams, and Hanif. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Sanchez for her remarks on Intro 432. She's not here? Okay. Next, we'll turn to Councilmember Dinowitz for your remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for hearing this bill, Intro 577, a local law related to requiring the Department of Education to conduct a study on the feasibility of installing green roofs in schools. I think many of us know green roofs have a host of environmental benefits, absorbing massive amounts of rainwater and reducing the urban heat island effect. These green roofs are critically important to expanding green space, particularly in the Bronx. We have some of the highest heat indices and some of the poorest air quality and combined sewage overflow that is causing flooding all over the Bronx, all over the city, in fact. And there are also potential educational benefits to installing green roofs. I myself have seen in the classroom the benefits of having green spaces in our school. I had the benefit of teaching at a school that had a school garden, and there's nothing better than bringing kids to the garden to teach them about the environment. And this is another way we could provide green space and opportunities to our children to learn about their environment, about where they live. And I think leveraging the space that we have in our public schools, both for our surrounding community and for the students who go to school in the building, is really critical and important. So this bill would require a study, excuse me, but the feasibility of installing green roofs on at least two schools in each community school district, both benefiting the students in the schools and the entire surrounding community. Thank you, Chair.
I'd like now to turn over to Councilmember Stevens, her remarks on Intro 733, 797, and Reso 292.
Good afternoon, Chair and councilmembers and the administration. Thank you, Chair Joseph, for your opportunity to have my bills heard today, which are meant to improve the quality of education for our students and families in the city. The first bill is Intro 733, a local law that would amend the administrative code of New York City in relation to requiring the New York City Department of Education to report information on career technical education programs in New York City public schools. At a time when we should be reimagining the workforce for young people, we need to look and make sure we're reviewing all opportunities and things like CTE is a place where we need to start to ensure that young people are granted the opportunities to have a good career path. This bill is important because it allows for a better oversight and administrative and effectiveness of program career preparation for our students. The next bill is Intro 797, a local law that would require the Department of Education to report on annual basis the number of students and clubs and organizations at each school. The report would also require the department to report on types of faculty and advisors for each club or organization, for example, whether the advisor is a teacher or a professional. Finally, the department will be required to report of any student clubs that organizations authorize to conduct activities off school grounds. Students and organizations are known to have positive impacts on students. This legislation would allow the city to gain more insight and therefore the opportunity to reflect on the educational outcomes this form of extracurricular activities provide. This would lead to policy development and generate well-informed budget allocations. This local law would also enhance community engagement with students, as more did. I can encourage such involvement. The final bill we will be introducing today is Reso 292, a resolution calling New York Department of Education to create an inclusive dress code policy that compiles Title IX of the Federal Education Amendment Act and accounts for diversity of cultures, gender expression, and body diversity. This resolution will promote equity and inclusion that allows students to dress in a way that is respectful to their ethnic background and cultures and gender identity. An inclusive dress code would ensure that the Department of Education meets this requirement by steering away from discriminating girls, as well as transgender and gender nonconforming youth of color, who are disproportionately disciplined for dress code violations. I would like to, I look forward to hearing feedback from the administration and working collaboratively to get all three bills passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. We will now turn over to Councilmember Lee for her remarks on Intro 771.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. New York City is home to an incredible 700 languages. Three million of our residents are foreign-born, hailing from over 200 countries, and almost half of our city speaks a language other than English. Simply put, the success of our education system depends on being able to communicate with parents and students in the languages that they're most familiar with, and our city does have the resources to address each family's linguistic needs. The Department of Education provides written translations of documents in nine languages, but interpretation over the phone is also available for another 240 languages. With Intro 771, the City Council will ensure that the DOE more proactively distributes information regarding the city's phone interpretation services to schools and their parents and student bodies. I appreciate your support as we pursue more language access across our city's schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. We will now turn it over to Councilmember Hanif for her remarks on Reso 95.
Thank you to Chair Joseph for holding today's important hearing and including my Resolution 95 on the agenda. This resolution calls on the Department of Education to consult with faith-based organizations to develop and provide all grade levels with a curriculum that focuses on religious diversity. I am proud that with 27 members sponsoring this resolution, we now have a majority of the council in support. In my new capacity as co-chair of the council's task force to combat hate, I've heard from students of different backgrounds about the lack of understanding that many students have about the religious experiences of their peers. This creates an environment where students are more vulnerable to bullying or bias-based incidents, which can range from subtle microaggressions to violent hate crimes. It has been eye-opening to learn about the ways in which students have been made to feel either ostracized or unsafe due to the religion that they practice. Our schools must be nurturing places where our young New Yorkers are able to express their full selves without fear. In order to meet this imperative, we must bring a universal religious diversity curriculum to our classrooms. By teaching students about the gorgeous mosaic of religions that makes New York City such a culturally rich and vibrant place, we can foster mutual understanding, respect, and exchange amongst our next generation. I am grateful for the interfaith coalition of supporters of this resolution, including Muslim Community Network, the Tannenbaum Center, the Interfaith Center of New York, and the SIC Coalition. The diversity of this coalition and the effort they have consistently dedicated to this fight over the last few years underscores how critical this resolution is. I encourage all of my colleagues to sponsor Reso 95 and urge for it to be swiftly brought to the floor for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanif. Finally, I'd like to say a few words about my legislation. Intro 266 would establish a bullying prevention task force. Despite efforts to combat bullying include the Respect for All Initiative of 2007, there's been a reported increase in discrimination, harassment, and bullying incidents at New York City public schools, with more than 18,000 such incidents during the '21 and '22 school year, because bullying can have serious and lasting effects on victims, bullies, and bystanders alike. It is critically important that we take additional steps to maintain a safe and supportive learning environment for all students. Intro 266 would establish a bullying prevention task force composed of public officials, DOE employees, experts in conflict resolution, bullying prevention, mental health, school safety, and educators, which would develop and submit a plan to the mayor and the council speaker, including proposals to prevent and address bullying in schools. I'm also pleased to sponsor Reso 372, calling on New York City public schools to provide support for a student newspaper at every high school. I was shocked to learn that a 2022 report by Baruch College found that just over 25% of New York City public schools have a student newspaper. Worse, among the 100 public schools with the highest poverty rate, only 7% have a newspaper, while 62% of the high schools with the lowest poverty rates have newspapers. Additionally, schools with high percentage of Black and Hispanic students are less likely to have a student newspaper than schools with low rates of poverty and higher percentage of white and Asian students. In addition to helping students to develop writing skills, school newspapers provide students with a platform to express their ideas and creativity, while also helping to develop critical thinking skills and building school community. Student newspapers can also serve as a pipeline for more racially and socioeconomically representative professional journalists. I'd like to thank the Youth Journalism Coalition for bringing this critical issue to my attention. I am pleased to note that we expect to have some student journalists here today to testify on this resolution. I would like to acknowledge Councilmember Gutierrez that have joined. Now, without anything further, I'd like to turn over to our first witness panel. I will now turn to Committee Counsel Nadia Jean-François to administer the oath.
Good afternoon. I will call on each of you individually for a response. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Kimberly Ramones. Deborah Wollenberg. Kalima McKenzie-Sims. Travanda Kelly. Jolynn Nagy. Jay Ping. Adam Rarier. John Shea. Elaine Lindsay. George Patterson. Clayber Palmer. Robin Davison. Thank you so much. You may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members of the Committee on Education. My name is Dr. Robin Davison, and I am the Executive Director of School Culture and Climate within the Office of Safety and Youth Development, known as OSED for the New York City public schools. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Thank you also for your continued partnership in supporting our students, families, and schools, as we discuss Intro 118, which calls for a report on schools with dress code policies, and Intro 266, which calls for the creation of a bullying prevention task force. The value of your critical partnership in sustaining our preventative work, especially around restorative justice practices, is immeasurable. On behalf of our school communities, I thank Chair Joseph and the members of this committee for your unwavering advocacy and support. New York City public schools is committed to ensuring that schools are places where all students are safe, valued, and supported. OSED has been deeply invested in this work, and we have made significant investments and progress in this area over years. Three years ago, in 2021, New York City public schools issued the current dress code guidelines, which set forth New York City public schools' policy for schools' dress codes. Dress codes are decided at the individual school level and must be consistent with these guidelines. Dress code guidelines require that schools examine their reasoning and justification for their respective policies and that they consider evolving generational, cultural, and social identity norms. Under no circumstances can dress codes prohibit a student from wearing clothing consistent with their needs based on their protected identities. In addition, dress codes must be gender-neutral and cannot prohibit certain types of clothing that are stereotypically associated with one gender. Dress codes must be implemented equally and in a nondiscriminatory manner. Schools have also been advised that before developing a new dress code or reexamining an existing one, they should consult with their school leadership team, which consists of parents and students, to ensure that different perspectives and identities are considered and respected. For example, dress codes may not require students who identify as a specific gender from wearing attire that is stereotypically associated with a different gender, for example, requiring only students who identify as female to wear dresses at graduation. Specifically prohibits miniskirts, which are predominantly worn by students who identify as female, or prohibit headwear worn for religious observations, or hairstyles, or accessories that are closely associated with protected categories. Schools must ensure that all staff, students, and parents are advised in writings of the dress code. Students rights with respect to the attire and consequences for students wearing clothing that violates the dress code. New York City public schools has been intentional in ensuring multiple entry points of access to the dress code guidelines on New York City public schools' webpages, i.e., it is located under LGBTQ supports and guidelines on gender, as well as other spaces on New York City public schools' website. Students who do not adhere to the dress code may be provided with appropriate supports, interventions, or disciplinary responses consistent with the citywide behavior expectations to support student learning. Supports and interventions may include adjustments such as asking the student to turn a shirt inside out, counseling supports, meeting with staff, or parent notification. Instances of dress code infractions are recorded by schools and made available in our system. New York City public schools had made many strides to ensure students can express themselves through their clothing in ways that are respectful, not just to themselves, but to others. While we agree with the core intent of this bill, which we understand to ensure that dress codes do not perpetuate gender stereotypes and are implemented in an equitable manner, New York City public schools have adopted and implemented such policies through its dress code guidelines. We have reservations about the extensive record-keeping and disclosure requirements in the bill when our dress code guidelines already require dress codes to respect student gender identities. I would now like to turn to Intro 266, the New York City public schools' Respect for All initiative aims to prevent and address discrimination, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. This initiative builds the capacity of staff and students to sustain an inclusive environment where everyone feels valued, respected, and safe. As part of Respect for All, all schools are required to train staff and students on bullying policies, preventing, and reporting procedures annually by October 31st. Schools are also mandated to include strategies for addressing bullying and harassment in their consolidated plans and Respect for All programs into instruction and student support services. These plans are then reviewed annually, ongoing, and periodically by superintendent teams prior to certification. Additionally, schools must provide procedures for reporting bullying, including contact information at the superintendent's office for additional support. Each school appoints a Respect for All liaison who is trained centrally and serves as a resource for bullying, reporting procedures, training school staff, and to whom reports can be made. OSED also offers year-round training in social-emotional learning supports and restorative practices for all Respect for All liaisons, teachers, and staff, to ensure that they have tools to support schools with all bullying incidents. New York City public schools have taken several actions this year to prevent incidents of bullying, which includes: We have facilitated refresher courses for all Respect for All liaisons emphasizing bias-based bullying and discrimination. We have partnered with external organizations to train schools in incidents of bullying. We have hosted citywide retrainings of all principals and district office teams on applying a discipline code to address incidents appropriately while providing opportunities to educate and remediate behavior in ways to help students grow. We've worked with the Division of FACE, a family-community institute, to update trainings for parents and guardians with clear information on reporting pathways and how to expedite resolutions. Additionally, we meet monthly with students, families, and advocates to hear their concerns and provide them with immediate support. We meet with student advisory councils to discuss young people's concern around bullying as well. We have leveraged New York City public school surveys to address the results, to address the perceptions of bullying and the concerns of multiple stakeholders around safety, trust, and bullying. We have also partnered with community-based organizations who have helped us revise our Respect for All training for all schools. We support the intent of this bill and commit to create a safe environment for our students and look forward to conversations and working with council on this bill. Thank you.
George Patterson is next.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members of the Committee on Education. My name is George Patterson, and I service the Senior Executive Director for Community Schools, part of the Office of Community Support and Wellness within the Division of School Leadership. I'm happy to be here to talk about Intro number 432 concerning after-school programming. For my time as a middle school principal, I deeply believe in the importance of after-school programs and want to emphasize that this important essential work would not be possible without the leadership and dedication of our partner agency, the Department of Youth and Community Development, DYCD. Together, we recognize the powerful impact that after-school, academic, and enrichment programming can have on our students, especially our most socially and academically vulnerable student populations. Before I discuss the proposed legislation, I wanted to provide a landscape of what after-school looks like today across New York City public schools. We provided a similar update at this time last year. There are three main types of after-school programming options available to our students and families: DYCD-funded programs, which is the largest number of programs in our schools; DOE-funded programs; and individual programs that run between schools and CBOs. Our CBO partners offer a variety of targeted services to our schools and tailor supports based on school and community needs. These services can range from instructional supports to enrichment activities that can have physical recreational components. A look at our current data shows 956 schools with at least one centrally funded after-school program. 580 of the 956 serve middle and high school students. There are 654 schools, 351 serving middle and high school students, that do not have a centrally funded after-school program. Turning to Intro 432, which would require New York City public schools serving middle and high school students to provide families with information on after-school programs in their schools, New York City public schools supports the intent of this bill. Currently, information about after-school programs is communicated in a myriad of ways to families, such as school websites, the DYCD website. to families, such as school websites, the DYCD website, and so on. We're looking forward to work with the council on providing guidance to schools for sharing this information more consistently with families. I thank you again for your time today.
Next up, you may begin.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, members of the council, and Mr. Public Advocate. Thank you for allowing me to address the committee today regarding the proposed bill requiring New York City agencies to conduct green roof feasibility studies. My name is John Shay, and I am the Chief Executive Officer for the Division of School Facilities at the New York City Public Schools. We at New York City Public Schools are deeply committed to advancing environmental sustainable practices within our educational system, and we share in the enthusiasm for the benefits that green roofs offer to our buildings, school communities, and to the environment. However, I express reservations regarding the feasibility of this bill, and we'd not support it in its current form. The lack of clarity regarding the definition for a green roof presents a significant challenge. We have observed a wide spectrum of green roof implementations across our schools, ranging from comprehensive installations like the one at PS41 of Manhattan, funded by REZOA and PTA dollars, to smaller-scale green roof projects mandated through local laws 92 and 94 of 2019. Without clear guidelines determining which structures qualify as green roofs would be ambiguous and problematic for compliance with the bill. Additionally, the establishment of a means to fund the operations of these green roofs is paramount. Without proper maintenance, the sustainability and effectiveness of these installations will lead to safety liabilities and the need for unnecessary capital expenditures. It is essential to recognize that while green roofs hold promise as a sustainable infrastructure solution, our office is currently engaged in other initiatives that are ready for implementation immediately. For instance, in partnership with DECAST, our solar photovoltaic, or PV, program has made significant strides in installing rooftop solar PV systems across our school buildings. Currently, we have successfully completed 90 installations with a total electrical capacity of 19.7 megawatts, constituting 80% of all of the solar electrical capacity on all New York City-owned municipal buildings. This program not only reduces our carbon footprint, but also contributes to our long-term energy independence and resilience. In conclusion, while we applaud the intent behind the proposed bill and remain enthusiastic about the potential of green roofs, we suggest the need to work with the committee on the language of the bill to ensure its feasibility. We stand ready to collaborate and contribute our expertise towards the development of a more viable and effective sustainability initiatives for the benefit of our schools and the broader New York City community. Now I'd like to turn to Intro 399, which would require New York City Public Schools to report annually on the degree to which indoor and outdoor facilities comply with the Americans for Disabilities Act, or ADA. New York City Public Schools is committed to ensuring that its programs, services, and activities are accessible to staff, members of the school community, and family members with disabilities. As part of Local Law 12 of 2023, we have posted our five-year accessibility plan on our website. The Accessibility Plan details the role of our Accessibility Subcommittee in partnership with the School Construction Authority to discuss strategic planning on all issues regarding accessibility within school buildings. The plan also includes details for improving digital content to ensure accessibility standards are met. Accessibility is not seen as a legislated mandate for compliance for our agency, but as a basic human right. The five-year capital plan for fiscal year 25 to 29 increased the funding levels for accessibility, allocating $800 million towards making our buildings accessible for our school communities, an increase of $50 million from the previous 2024 capital plan. That plan, with our continued focus on citywide equity, funded 56 accessibility projects in historically underserved districts. We are grateful for the support and the advocacy of our partners to accomplish this important work for our students and families. As we only recently received the bill, we are still reviewing it, and we look forward to engaging with the council. Thank you.
Deputy Executive Director for Career and Technical Education?
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, members of the Committee on Education, and Public Advocate Williams. My name is Adam Brier, and I am the Deputy Executive Director of Career and Technical Education in the Office of Student Pathways. Career-connected learning is a top priority for the chancellor and sits at the center of his bold vision to reimagine the student experience so that every New York City Public School student graduates on a path to a rewarding career aligned with their passion and purpose, and offering long-term economic security and a choice-filled life. Strengthening and equitably growing, market-aligned, high-quality career and technical education, CTE, is a core element of this strategy. The New York City Public Schools Career Connected Learning portfolio, led by the Office of Student Pathways, OSP, supports and oversees a portfolio of over 296 CTE programs operating in over 130 schools. This includes 46 CTE dedicated schools and 85 comprehensive schools with CTE programs, including the Brooklyn Navy Yard Steam Center. CTE presently serves over 60,000 students across the five boroughs. We would like to recognize the leadership of this council and thank you for your continuous collaboration and dedicated support. The proposed legislation, Intro Number 733, will revive and amend the Sunset Local Law 174, requiring the New York City Public Schools to report on the career and technical education programs in New York City Public Schools. This legislation will provide greater transparency through new data reporting requirements that will serve to inform New York City Public Schools, school communities, elected officials, and stakeholders. We are in support of this legislation and look forward to working with city council to ensure that the reporting requirements named in this bill align to high-quality CTE program implementation and, to the extent possible, what we track in our data systems.
Does that conclude the administration's testimony? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Cleaver Palma. I am the Executive Director for the New York City Public Schools Office of Language Access, otherwise known as OLA. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss Intro 771 regarding the distribution of information on New York City Public Schools over-the-phone interpretation services. New York City Public Schools is committed to ensuring that school staff and families are aware of and have access to all available language assistance services. To that end, we take various steps every year to support our school staff and families. To begin, school staff receive information about the available language assistance services via the Language Access Kit, which schools receive every September. This kit includes several language access resources, including the telephone number to access over-the-phone interpretation and multilingual signage for schools to post at public entrances. School staff are also notified about how and when to access the phone services via electronic communications throughout the year, such as via the P Digest, OLA's monthly newsletter for schools, periodic email blast, and periodic email blast to school-based language access coordinators. School staff also receive information during language access training sessions, which cover best practices for using over-the-phone interpretation service. Additionally, staff can refer to OLA's online page, internet page, for details on accessing the service. Lastly, the over-the-phone interpretation service is also available to agents behind our parent support line, 718-935-2009, to access when a language need is identified. Families also receive information in the New York City Public Schools nine covered languages on the available language assistance services on the New York City Public Schools website, during public awareness campaigns, at parent events throughout the city, via an e-campaign, which includes emails, texts, and robocalls to families, and on an annual mailed postcard to households, and at schools that make use of the signage available with the Language Access Kit or other OLA-provided resources, such as language access displays or brochures that are meant for families. In closing, we support the goals of this legislation and look forward to working with the council to ensure access to this valuable service, to this valuable service that is accessible to all. Thank you, and we welcome your questions.
Thank you, and Elaine Lindsay.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members of the Committee on Education. My name is Elaine Lindsay, and I am the Chief of School Support for High Schools for New York City Public Schools. I am here to express my support for Intro Number 797, which aims to enhance transparency and accountability regarding student clubs and organizations in our public schools. Student clubs and organizations play a vital role in the holistic development of our students, offering them opportunities to explore interests, develop leadership skills, and build community. Currently, principals collect information and verify this information through a survey, which is then publicly displayed on myschools.nyc, our school search tool. By formalizing this process and requiring annual reports, Intro Number 797 ensures that we can monitor and support these essential extracurricular activities effectively. This transparency will help identify schools that may lack these opportunities and direct resources to ensure that all students have access to a diverse range of activities. Moreover, including details such as the type of faculty advisor and authorization for off-campus activities provides valuable insights into these clubs' operational aspects. This information can help in assessing the adequacy of support provided to these student groups and ensure compliance with relevant regulations while safeguarding student privacy and safety. I fully support Intro Number 797. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. We are happy to address any questions or concerns you may have.
I would like to recognize Councilmember Shaker and Councilmember Lewis.
Can you provide an overview of the current measures and policies DOE has in place to prevent and address bullying, including cyberbullying, within schools?
Sure. Under our Respect for All policies, we, one, we, all schools must train their staff by October 31st, and principals and all their liaisons must train their schools by October 31st. Annually, we have Respect for All liaisons. They also serve as a resource for school and staff. They, too, also must be trained. They act as designees in their schools for whom reports, they are the liaisons for schools and for schools and for students. They are the designees that students can report any bullying to, and for parents, teachers, staff, as well. Additionally, schools must also distribute and make electronically any written materials and information on reporting for families. We also provide citywide training for staff, and we, I'm sorry, we distribute and make electronically any written material for families at the beginning of the school year on bullying reporting, so families can have access and know all of the multiple ways in which bullying can be reported. We also provide citywide training year-round on restorative practices and social-emotional learning for Respect for All liaisons and also for all citywide staff. Additionally, we have expanded bullying infraction codes from 22 to 44 codes. So those are all of the measures that has been put in place.
The liaison, the Respect for All liaison, are they embedded in the school, or it's out in the office that you represent?
They are all in schools.
They're all in school? How often are they trained? Once a year?
Correct. And this year, we've also implemented refresher courses for liaisons.
Superintendents are also trained?
This year, we've trained superintendent teams, and we've also extended the training for family-facing members of superintendent teams, which are the FSCs and FCLs.
And the restorative practice training that you provide is that for all staffers as well?
Correct.
When you train your staff, how do they, when you train them, how do they know to identify bullying? How do they find it?
So we have a deck that we provide principals and principal designees, and the deck that we give them teaches them how to identify bullying.
And how about cyberbullying?
That is included. That is included in the deck, in the deck, in the training.
And parents are also trained to look out for what bullying could look like? Because kids are good at covering it up.
Yes. So this year, we've also trained family leadership coordinators, and we've partnered with FACE as well, and so they've been trained as well.
And Language Access is also provided for our parents who do not speak English?
So this year, we've, we have, this is our resources, for our Respect for All resources. We have translated this in all languages, and we actually have them here. You have them, Joel Lynn?
Yeah.
And Anaya has them. We, this is our Respect for All resources. We were very intentional in translating them in all languages, and we have copies for you. We also have our Respect for All cards, which also indicates for families, you can carry them in their back pockets, not just for families, but for students as well, on how to report bullying, intimidation, and harassment.
Is there a video component to this training for parents as well?
Actually, this year, we created a toolkit for families, and the toolkit can be accessed on our New York City Public Schools website. It's a, it's a video, it's these resources, and it's these cards. And we also have step-by-step, step-by-step access on how you can report bullying.
And you said there's a video this time around? Good. How do you currently handle reports of bullying incidents? We talked about that. What procedures are in place to ensure timely and appropriate response, and how are these incidents trackeded? How do you track them and you document them?
So all incidents of bullying are reported in our OR system, and that is the only, that's the state-recognized system, the only state-recognized system. And OR sends out, there is, I'm sorry, OR sends out, I'm sorry, they send out reminder notices. So at the five-day mark, that, at the five-day mark, that is the time in which the report has to be completed, and by the 10-day mark, parents have to be notified that the investigation is completed. So ORs have a system in which it reminds schools that by the five-day mark and the 10-day mark, those, the investigation has to be completed, and once it is completed, all who have been involved, whether all students involved, have to receive intervention supports and services.
And if the child doesn't feel safe, what are the procedures to seek safety? Let's say I want to leave the school as a child and no longer wants to be there, because bullying is, it's a tough thing. And to see my, I know we try to do restorative justice to, you know, to make sure they understand that, but what if I, I'm not that kind, I can accept it? What are the steps in place if I want to leave the school?
So all, so the goal is to keep students in their schools, right? And in those unfortunate cases, if a student does want to leave the school, we try to find the best option for the student, but we, the goal is to keep the student in the school, and we try to exercise all options to make sure that the student does feel safe. So we make sure that there's trust in adults in the school. In the school, the student also has the Respect for All liaison that is the designated person in the school who is equipped and is resourced to make sure that the student has that person to lean on. But we, thank you, but we want to make sure the kid, that the student, that the student is safe in his or her own school community. But we do have other avenues if the student doesn't feel safe and they can exercise a safety transfer.
Okay. What are the trends are you seeing, the frequency of reporting of bullying incidents in recent years? How the numbers are looking?
So we've observed that 35% of bullying reported are occurring in middle schools, 23% in high schools, and 17 in elementary schools, and we are also seeing that the most prevalent bias-based is raised. And we are also seeing that the most prevalent bias-based is race, the second is sexual orientation, and the third is weight. So those are the most prevalent trends.
And how do you deal with the race?
Yeah. So based on the trends, what we usually do is myself and our team, we sit down and based on, we look at these trends and we create training. We sit down as a committee. We take the feedback from our student groups and our advocacy groups and we revise our training as such. And we sit down with our CBOs and we come up with the best resources and we revise our training so that we address these issues and concerns that come up based on the trends.
Based on your data analysts, right? You analyze your data, you use that to make informed decisions, right? What type of resources you put in place where you see the most is happening?
So we, as of late, we've been partnering up with different community-based organizations. We've been exercising, we've been leveraging our restorative practice partnerships. We've been, you know, looking at our SEL team and our partnerships with our restorative teams. And we've been shifting our trainings a bit. We've been looking at our current trainings and we've been just leveraging the data to shift the trainings that we have so more recently. You know, this summer, based on the trends that we've seen, we had to revise the offerings for this summer to ensure that we are addressing the needs based on the data. So we've seen, we're seeing issues more so around, you know, that's, that is, that is hitting our middle schools and high schools. And so those are the teams that we're now, we're approaching, right? We're spending more time with our middle schools and high schools. We, we, last year, you know, I met with my RFA team and it was a lot of, you know, we had some trainings on peer mediation. So we had to shift it and look more around our professional development that talks more around bias-based incidents, that talks more about racial, you know, racial issues to address the need right now. And so we want to make sure that we leverage our data to make the most informed decisions.
Our restorative justice budget took a hit. How do we continue to practice restorative justice? If the need is increasing, but our budget is decreasing?
Chair Joseph, we're committed to make it work. We're going to make it work. We're going to make it work. We took a hit, but we planned ahead. We planned ahead. We, we're going to use human capital. Our team has been planning ahead in case of the hit. We, we sat down last year. We did a lot of work last year around our school-based restorative practice team. We have some school-based, we have school-based restorative coordinators that we trained last year. We have our teams that we put into place on the school-based level. And they're ready. And we've put a lot of work and resource in our school communities. And we're going to do the same this year with the funding that we received. We're very grateful for the funding. And so we're going to move forward powerfully with the funds that we have.
Okay, I'm going to leave it right there. I'm going to leave it right there.
We can always use more funding, but we are going to make it work.
So how do you currently coordinate with other city agencies such as Commission on Human Rights, Department of Health, Mental Hygiene, and NYPD to address and prevent bullying?
Sure. I'll let my partner take this question.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Honorable Leader Joseph, city council members, thank you for having us today. So we do collaborate with the New York City Commission on Human Rights. We offer their training to schools. We also train superintendent teams on combating different types of discrimination, bias, harassment, and learning more about New York City human rights laws. And the intention of that training is that superintendents could now take that training and offer to their schools in their districts based on the data that we see, specific to the type of biases. We also work with the New York City Police Department, the NYPD, cadets that are school safety agents that are graduating, going into schools. We have numerous days of trainings under our chief, Mark Ramperson, who oversees that work specifically in that aspect where future cadets are being taught about bullying, bullying prevention, being taught about autism, BRTs, and so forth. And the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, we have colleagues that work very closely with them, meet monthly, and they discuss suicide prevention, mental health, depression, and how to support our students.
Yeah. How much of the 988 are now in schools for mental health support? Are we, that was a bill the council passed to make sure that 988 is available to New York City public students?
My colleague who oversees that work, we could get back to you on that. But I know that the website was updated to reflect that. But my colleague is now here, Director of Crisis, and will get that answer for you.
What are some of the challenges you face when you do a lot of work with inter-agencies, collaborations?
Yeah, it's always turnover. And sadly, you know, when you work with, like, New York City Commission on Human Rights, sometimes they lose people and there's always human capital, always capacity. So, but we're very grateful for them. Phenomenal work. They are our sister agency. And so we rely on each other. They came out to us, Chief, sorry, City Councilmember Hanif, Sec Coalition, we worked with them, issues in District 30. So we're, you know, we're very interconnected. You know, there's no ambiguity when it comes to the same messaging. Human rights applies across the city of New York.
Thank you. I'm going to ask two more questions and I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Stevens. So how do you engage students, parent, educators, CBOs in developing and implementing bullying prevention strategies? How can I take that same technique and bring it home or bring it to the larger community?
Sure. So we, I'm, we meet monthly with student groups. So we have several student groups under restorative practices that we meet with monthly. We also have a Student Advisory Council, CSAC, that meet monthly with one of our team members. And we receive feedback from both student groups. I myself meet monthly with an education council, an education group of advocates that give me tons of feedback around my portfolio, around bullying prevention, suspensions and hearings, et cetera. And I receive their feedback. Additionally, and I leverage a New York City Public School survey. So the survey, there's two type of surveys. There's one survey that we use and there's another student perception survey where, that it specifically talks about trust and it talks about perceptions on bullying and safety. So we leverage all of that information and we use that information to build our trainings, to set goals. We use that training in our cross-functional teams of how we're going to have division-wide strategies. So all of that information is used.
Thank you. Could you give me a quick data on the number of incidents for the school year of 2022 to 2023 and 2023 to 2024 to date?
Yes. So as reported in local law, in 2022-23, complaints increased by 17% and material incidents increased by 22% compared to 21-22. So in 21-22, 58% of complaints were deemed to be material incidents. In 22-23, 60% of complaints were deemed to be material incidents. This was an increase from the prior year. So for the first half of the school year, 23-24, we see a 10%, 10.5% increase in complaints and an increase of 12.8% material incidents.
Do you have the numbers instead of percentage? Can I get a number? You'll get back.
I do not have that, but I can get it to you.
Absolutely. And how are you using these numbers to reduce? See, right? If we capturing data, there's a reason why we capture data. We don't just capture numbers to capture numbers. So what are you doing with that data to reduce incidents of bullying in schools?
Well, we, we, I mean, the data drives everything that we do.
Absolutely.
We are, we're certainly continuing what we're doing. And we're putting it on, we're doing it on steroids. We're using this information in our cabinet meeting to set our goals. We're leveraging this information as we meet with principals and superintendent teams. We're setting, we're using this as we train. All new information, we, when we train our Respect For All Liaisons, as we update our trainings for schools, we put this information, all new information, in our training. As I shared earlier, all the information on bias-based incidents, all of the new information that we've leveraged this year around middle schools and high schools, all of the information around, that we've learned around race and that we've learned around weight. All of this information is used and included in our trainings. And as new information becomes available, all of this information is used in our trainings and is shifted. We, we have, in our cabinet meetings and when we set our goals and when we work as cross-functional teams internally, we leverage this information as we meet cross-functionally with our guidance counselors, social workers outside of my particular portfolio. We meet with our superintendent teams in our school communities so that this is one central message and we're chipping away at bullying and harassment, intimidation, and we're meeting our goals centrally. Because we certainly have, you know, the needs of our children at the forefront. And, you know, we're in a really, you know, we're in a really precarious place right now in the world. And there's a lot happening. And we're doing everything we can to make sure that our children are safe. And all, each and every effort and all of our effort is in this space where we're, we're taking every effort into consideration to make sure we're doing all we can to keep our kids safe.
I'm always going to ask this. How much, you said you meet with students, but are students really centered? And as you're building this model, it's about students. And Chair Stevens and I, we always say that. We make decisions for young people, but not with young people. So I want to know how much of the young people are at the table as you're making these decisions?
Oh, Chair Joseph, I'm glad you said that. Children, for me, are always centered. Actually, my dissertation was on student voice. So I strongly believe that you have to make decisions with children centered. And when we, I strongly believe you have to make decisions with children at the center. And so when we had our youth conference, students were in the center making decisions alongside us. I know you all had a hearing on that day scheduled because you all were invited to attend youth conference and be there with us, but you all had a hearing scheduled on that day. And you would have seen that our children were centered in making decisions alongside us about these, about justice. Like, how do we combat bullying? Like, how do we make decisions?
But ongoing, not just one event?
Correct.
Conversation has to be ongoing.
Absolutely. Monthly. And as I said earlier, we have, like, we have student groups with restorative practices. We have student groups such as our chancellor advisory, who we meet with monthly and we gauge these topics with them, right? And, you know, we have multiple, we meet with students monthly around these topics and get their ideas around, like, what's happening in your school communities? How do we change this? What are we not seeing, right? What are the gaps that we, as adults, don't see that's missing? So absolutely, we take their perspectives into consideration as we're making these decisions.
Well, thank you for that. When you collect your data, do you have a breakdown on demographic, on the students that are reporting the incidents? If so, what are the trends you're seeing in terms of demographic and the students that are experiencing bullying?
Yes. So by demographic, in 2022-2023, number of accused students, 45 were female and 94 were male, which was a total of 139 students. And just this year, it evened out. 75 were female and 80 were male. A total of 155, which was an 11.5% change.
All right. I'm going to pass it on to Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Chair Joseph. Really appreciate it. I just have a couple of questions. I'm going to start with Intro 733. And one of the reasons this bill came about is, you know, especially with CTE schools, I think it's an important pathway for young people to start them in their career journeys. But I often saw, when I was in the education system, how a lot of these schools, once the certified teacher left, there was no program. And young people were signing up to go to these schools and not being able to get certified. So I guess my first question is, how many full-time and part-time certified CTE instructors does DOE currently employ? And how does DOE ensure that CTE instructors are certified and receive relevant professional development? And what are the current challenges in maintaining a sufficient number of certified instructors? And how would the proposed legislation support the improvement of instructor certification and trainings?
Thank you for that question. So currently, the sum of active full-time CTE instructors throughout the city, citywide, is 893. That breaks down into 576 within the OSP portfolio. And of course, schools are free to hire CTE licensed teachers for their programs that aren't in our portfolio, 317.
But I've heard in the past that it's really hard for schools to even find CTE students, I mean, CTE teachers. And even the certification, either getting it from the state has been, like, really hard. So can you talk about some of those challenges as well?
Yes, yes. So we're committed to ensuring that all of our CTE programs are staffed with certified CTE teachers in accordance with state law through Future Ready NYC and our partnership with CUNY and SUNY. We're working on scaling and diversifying our teacher pipeline programs from high school. All schools offering CTE programs are provided with professional development from the Office of Student Pathways throughout the school year.
But, and I hear you around the teacher and all that stuff, trying to get more teachers. But like, even with CTE, that becomes a little bit difficult because you need to have a special skill. So what are you guys doing for that, right? So like, let's say, like, I know, what is it? Bronx construction, right? Like, they need certified teachers who can teach some specific skills. So how are you guys working to ensure that you have instructors for those type of things? Because that seems more general in the sense of like, yes, we know we need to cultivate more teachers and things like that. But how are we getting teachers with those special skill sets in these roles?
So we have a couple of specific programs that are aimed toward addressing that very specific issue. The Success Via Apprenticeship Program, the SVA program, takes students through a rigorous application process who are CTE students and want to become CTE teachers. And they enter into a program that is an apprenticeship model where five years of in-the-field working and college education, they are licensed as CTE teachers. Apart from that, we are also working with TRQ to run a targeted marketing and advertising campaign to ensure that career changers out there are aware that this is an opportunity, that they could become CTE teachers.
Yeah, I like that a lot. Could you talk to me a little about what the relationships are with, like, unions and things like that? Because I think, especially how do we, when you're looking at these different pipelines and things like that, I think that would be a great way to make sure we're recruiting and working in partnership with them as well.
Well, the SVA program is effectively a partnership with the UFT.
Well, not just the UFT. I'm talking about unions in general, right? Especially with, like, special trades and like, I know, like, the aviation, like, all those, all those groups typically have unions. How are you working with those groups to help with the pipeline for certification for teachers and also to get students in those programs when they are graduating from the CTE programs?
So I don't have information about specific unions and our partnerships with them individually. I will share that our industry commissions do include post-secondary and industry partners that meet with schools, not individually, but they meet and schools are invited to join those meetings. that meet, uh, with schools, not individually, but they meet and schools are invited to join those meetings. And they inform our teachers about labor market alignment, what needs to happen within schools to make sure that their instruction is aligned with the marketplace. And that should and could be feeding into students who want to become teachers and therefore feeding into the SVA pipeline.
Um, and, and I, I know I have limited time, but if you can get back to us with like the partnerships around some of the bigger unions that the CTE schools are partnering with and ensuring that young people, you know, if they are certified, if they're getting into unions, then I would love to hear more and if you can follow with community staff after. But I just, because of limited time, I wanna move on to seven nine seven. Um, this law is around the student, sorry Chair, just a couple of minutes. Um, this law is, is, um, local law will be regarding reporting on school clubs and organizations. And one of the issues I've found, especially when visiting a lot of schools, they are terrible at marketing. Um, and they'll be doing a host of things in the school and it's not being marketed at all. Parents don't know and I, and I know you said even in your opening that, you know, it's on school websites and things like that. But it is not being placed in a way that we are putting these things that are going on in schools in a real way that I think could actually attract more people to public schools. And so that is some of the reason why this came about. In addition to, I just truly believe in after-school and I think it's extremely important. But could you talk to me, um, currently, like how does DOE currently monitor and track the existing status of student clubs and, um, organizations? And also how do you partner with DYCD on that? Because the bulk of the after-school programs are through DYCD. And so how are you guys working together to kind of track that, monitor that? And then also make this accessible and available to the parents? Um, so that they know this is an attractive part to some of the public schools that we have?
Sure. So we meet with DYCD bi-weekly, we meet with DYCD monthly. Uh, we partnership with DYCD. Matter of fact, there was a, uh, after-school guide that we created uh, in, uh, collaboration with DYCD that's going to be released, uh, this upcoming school year. And that's gonna show all-
Well, you don't say you mean next year? Because the school year is over.
Yeah.
Okay.
The upcoming school year.
Next year, okay.
So-
Make sure.
Yeah. So what that guide is going to do is going to, uh, walk administrators through how to set up, how to create, how to sustain, uh, effective after-school programs. Um, I was a principal for sixteen years. After-school programs are almost at the heart of our schools. Why? Because they provide safety for students. We don't know what the students do when they leave or when they're on their way to school. But we know while they're in our, uh, while we have them, that they're gonna remain safe. We know that those programs lead to the culture and climate of schools. When schools, when students stay after school, they become part of the community. And then of course, the academic component of it. I mean, principals live and die by, you know, unfortunately, by the way students perform. And so much of that is handled after school. So in terms of, uh, marketing, uh, and, and you're a million percent correct. There's so much going on in schools. Uh, and I can say that principals market in like a plethora of ways. Uh, but just understand that most principals are instructional leaders. They're not like business leaders, right? So they, they're gonna do what, what comes natural. They're gonna market at PTA meetings, they're gonna mark through backpack home, through the school website. DYCD has a website. The DOE, um, has a, uh, an email address through any issues that you can, uh, put that down and we'll get back to you. Uh, community liaisons and, and as such, they're gonna do what's in their, kind of what's in their internal capacity to do. And, and that's, that is the-
Yeah, but that ain't working because you go to charter school and they're, they're hoping like, we have, we have after-school. And I'm like, so does the school that you're in right now? Like, what are we talking about? So, uh, I hear you and I understand, yes, that is their wheelhouse, but we gotta expand what that looks like. But, um, I do have limited time and thank you so much and I look forward to continuing to work, um, like I said, to get this bill passed because it is so important. And I think it, you know, like you said, after-school is the heart of a lot of these schools and how do we continue to work together collaboratively? Thank you.
I have a question on CTE. Uh, how do you track? One, how do you track, um, the number of students you have? Where are they? Do you track? And, and in terms of equipment, I visited a school recently and I'm not gonna name the school. They are a CTE program, but they're, they're still waiting on their equipment. We'll talk offline. And the program is kind of stalled, kind of on pause because they haven't received the equipment to do the programming. How long does it take for s, to support the infrastructure of CTE programming?
Well, if, if you have a question about a specific school, we can certainly look that, look into that and provide you with information, you know, afterward. But generally speaking, there are a number of funding streams that CTE programs receive. Uh, some are city-based, some are based in the Perkins, uh, grant. So schools receive that money and they are able to then use that to purchase equipment. The different, uh, the different contracts that are had with different vendors, uh, those are very specific and depending on-
So that's, that could be why there's a delay in, in receiving the equipment for the students to actually be in their CTE program?
Yeah, that would be very individualistic. And again, uh, if you have information about a specific program, we're happy to look into that and get back to you.
Overall, how many CTE programs do you have across the city?
There are, I believe, two hundred and ninety some odd programs.
And what, um, again, is it to employment? Once you go through the CTE program, I know some of them do have employment right after they leave the schools. What is the success rate? How do we track? Are we, are, how do we track success from this, right? The whole, the whole idea of CTE programming is to, to create a career pathway. How are we tracking that career pathway?
Thank you for that. New York City Public Schools does not conduct official research or reporting on internships. The proposed legislation, however, would enhance opportunities for researchers to study the outcomes of internships and whether they are related to industry certification and employment. We don't have the tracking data as to what students are doing exactly after they have graduated.
We need that because, right, um, I, I was an educator, right, twenty-two decades. And data drives my instruction every day in the classroom. So I don't understand why New York City Public School is not using that data to drive their policy or to stay informed on what are the trends, what are the kids looking, what are the career pathways? I don't understand. Maybe we'll, we'll introduce that bill and we'll probably have to strengthen that bill to even, to give us even more meat so we know what we're doing. Because, um, like Councilmember Stevens says, charter schools does this all day long. Before I go to sleep every night, there's this cute little boy that comes on, he's so adorable. He tells you exactly what he's doing in his charter school every single day. So and I've called on New York City Public Schools to step up their game in terms of marketing. There's some amazing things happening in New York City Public Schools, but no one knows. Councilmember Hanif, you have the floor, Sister.
Thank you so much, Chair Joseph. So I wanted to go back to, um, my colleague's first line of questioning about respect for all. Does every school have a Respect for All liaison?
Yes.
Understood. And then, um, so while restorative justice practices are integrated in some schools, what teaching takes place around accountability? For when peer, there's a peer-to-peer exchange that was bullying or a microaggression or a hate incident? How do both students know that something, uh, of disrespect occurred and they should understand?
Yeah, so the expectation is that happens through social emotional learning, teaching, and also through restorative practices. So-
Does that happen between peer-to-peer? Could you like give me an example of how two students or even a group of students? I mean, I, uh, in, and I, I'm surprised you mentioned middle school because that was also some of my worst years.
Right.
Um, and, uh, you know, first generation Bangladeshi Muslim, um, wearing our traditional attire, uh, would get bullied. My youngest sister got bullied for her weight. And at that time, there was like absolutely, n, n, and there was a less sophisticated, I will, I will say, less sophisticated approach to addressing those issues and sometimes even just outright not in schools. Schools did not want to deal with it. But I want to just understand, how are, uh, students exchanging conversation and dialogue with one another to better understand one another and apologize and move forward?
So if there's an incident of bullying, harassment, intimidation in a school, there's different actions that can be taken on a school level. So, and it's also dependent on-
But respectfully, because of my time, could you just share if there is, you know, to students?
It depends.
Okay.
If stu, if a student is being bullied and don't want to, it, it's also the student choice if they want to confront the bully.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because if a student does not want to confront the bully, then that's the student choice.
Got it.
Right? So that's one. But if they do, if a student wants to make up and then there can be a guidance intervention, then, right, so that can happen. There also can be something called a restorative circle. Where a designated in the school can bring the student together and they can come up with a plan and have a restorative action taken place, right? So there's different type of supports and interventions that's listed in a discipline code that can happen on the school level. Right? That can happen on the school level.
And that's-
And that can happen through, on the school level, that can happen with a CBO partner, that can happen with a teacher. So there's several interventions that can take place.
Got it. And then I wanna get to, um, my resolution, which I, I understand, uh, you, you all can't, um, really share feedback to. But the DOE issues a report on student-to-student bullying, harassment, intimidation, and discrimination twice a year. Um, over the last four reports, the number of religious-based incidences have steadily increased from ninety-two to a hundred and thirty-two to one sixty-two to two oh five. So how are you measuring the, the relationship of restorative justice programs being integrated in schools or the various other facets that you just described? Um, to the goal of reducing incidences? Is there a, are you, how are you evaluating?
You, you said religious-based?
Religious-based, yeah. I just took it from the, the, the DOE report, which outlines, um, race, religion, sexual orientation. It has all of the various protected categories.
So when we implement restorative justice practices, all incidents, restorative is about restoring, healing, period. So any incidents, whether it be religious-based, whether it be bias-based, whether it be incidents around race, students are in circles and they're talking about it and they're expressing their feelings. So we're just, restorative, uh, practices is about healing. So we have implemented restorative practices in many, many schools and the goal is for that healing to take place under restorative practices. So we have been doing that successfully, especially in the last six months. And so that has been our goal.
No, I understand that. I'm just surprised-
That has been happening around religious-based.
Sure. I'm just surprised that there's, you know, a, a dramatic, uh, jump from the numbers that are on the DOE's website, the number of incidences. And so I would like to understand, one, what's causing? Or, um, how do you account for this, uh, dramatic jump? And while healing is taking place, how are we also recognizing, um, the need to reduce these incidences? And then, um, just wanna wrap up my, uh, to, uh, final questions. What curriculum guidance or training does the DOE provide to schools and teachers regarding religious diversity education specifically?
So we have partnered with Face and History, um, and I guess we, we can talk a little bit about that. So the office of my office, we have partnered with Face and History, which is, um, an organization. And they, um, have partnered with our social studies department and they, um, are, um, launching, you wanna talk a little bit more about that?
Sure.
So the new cor, thank you for the question.
First.
So the new curriculum was introduced, um, earlier this year and we are working with our, um, uh, Department of Teaching and Learning to roll out Facing History, um, to support our social studies teachers and support our schools with the implementation of the curriculum, providing them with the professional learning and all the supports that they will need to, um, provide the learning, uh, around Facing History that addresses all of the concerns that you just spoke about.
So this is specifically geared towards social studies?
No, no, no. It's because of the topic itself, it would be in like a history class, yes. But all teachers would have access to this. It's not just necessarily going to be in a history class, but providing that support for those teachers and definitely looking at it in, out of the social studies class. But it could be across all disciplines.
And, and then, um, which other groups are you all working with and particularly over the last eight months? Which organizations have been brought to the school as their incidence is spiking? Um, I hear from students on a regular, I hear from parents on the regular about the uptick in antisemitic attacks, uh, anti-Muslim, anti-Arab attacks. Um, can you just talk about whether Facing History is the group that is providing these modules? Um, which other groups are you bringing in at this time?
Um, Resolution Ninety-Five, this spring, we announced that we are developing hidden voices curriculum resources on both the Muslim and Jewish American communities to celebrate the religious diversity of our city and uplift the culture and contribution of these two groups. The Mayor's Office, um, for the Prevention of Hate Crimes released a hate crime curriculum this year as another resource for our schools. As part of our Meet in the Moment work, we are heavily focused on education, including expanding partnership with Face and History and ourselves and workshops from a variety of community organizations and museums focused specifically on Islamophobia and antisemitism.
Can you just list out some of the organizations?
Sure. We have the Museum of Muslim Heritage.
Which is where?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Museum of Jewish Heritage. I apologize. The Museum of Jewish Heritage and Jewish Children's Museum. We also have the Mayor's Office for the Prevention of Hate Crimes. We have Muslim and Jewish American communities, but that doesn't look like it's an organization. We have the History of Islamic World.
That's an organization? Or is that a, a chapter in the module?
Oh, that looks like, that's, um, that's, that's a curriculum.
Well, I appreciate it. I'm gonna be reaching back out.
Okay.
I think what's, what's, um, evident here is that, uh, our schools and the DOE in particular is not, not reaching out to community-based organizations and particularly those that are led by our faith leaders and there are an abundant of them. And, and also taking into account the, uh, the multitude of, um, our faith practices. We're not homogeneous. Um, and so I'd just like a comprehensive list and this is why Resolution Ninety-Five is critical so that we're not just-
So, so I can talk specifically about, um, sorry, I just have some of the organizations, um, Chair Hanif, I apologize. We have, um, Muslim Community Network and and Museum of Jewish Heritage, just those two. But I also wanna go back to just your question around restorative practices. I just wanna say, whenever we receive any incidents, um, around Islamophobia or antisemitism, um, and in any of our school communities, my restorative justice team has been first responders. We have been in school, school communities, healing harm. I have to say that. We have been there, um, conducting listening circles, conducting healing circles from elementary schools to middle schools to high schools. The team has been working extremely hard in restoring communities since October seventh. So I, I have to say that they've been in partnership with their community, with organizations who have been, um, providing professional development to schools. And we have been in community with schools, ensuring that we are healing and restoring those communities so that they can move forward, um, and so that they can continue to, to function day to day with all that it, that has been happening in their school community. So I just wanted to answer that question.
And I have no doubt that you all have been working hard, um, to really, um, make sure that as students are leaving their homes or other, their community, that they are safe in their school building.
Yes.
Um, and that there is an infrastructure in school when issues arise, that they can go to someone. Um, over the last several months, and thank you Chair Joseph for giving me a few more minutes. Um, over the last few months, as the coacher of the Task Force to Combat Hate, we have brought, myself and Chair Eric Dinowitz have brought together students for African American Heritage Month- Jewish American Heritage Month, we're hosting two more for Asian American Heritage Month and Pride. And these are young people from all across our city who are showing up. And what we've learned resoundingly is that students don't know who to reach out to when there are issues. They are less likely to actually go to an adult because they feel that there will not be adequate steps taken for them to feel like something, that the issue has been resolved or that there was clarity. But, so I mean, there's a lot of need and I appreciate and commend the work you all have been doing already. I'd like to continue to partner because this is an issue that is tremendously important for my district. I represent a diverse Jewish and Muslim constituency and hearing from parents too. And I know that parents don't have an outlet of their own to be able to be in discussion about some of these issues. So thank you so much and I'll be reaching back out. But please count me as a partner for this work as a kid of public school system. This is especially, especially important. Thank you.
We're happy to work with you on this. Please.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanif, recognizing Councilmember Sanchez and Gennaro, Councilmember Narcisse. Go with your questions.
Good afternoon and thank you, Chair. Kudos to all educators, including the Chair, being a former teacher. I want to say thank you to all of you for the work you're doing in New York City. I do believe in public school system. And having said that, people should have choices and options. But for me, coming from a country and coming here and well-received in the public school system. So that's the reason that we, I believe we always trying to push, and the Chair been pushing, to make sure the inequities in our school system is being addressed. I see one of the principals that I used to have conversation with, thank you for being here, Mr. Patterson and all of you. So thank you. Lately, career and technical education being a big deal for our city. And it should, because we have to make sure that our kids are competitive to our, not only the United States, but the world in general. So I'm very much ensuring that. How does the turnover rate for, of CTE teachers compare to teachers in other subjects? And what impact does this have on CTE programs?
Thank you for that question. I do not have that information, but we will get that and get it back to you.
All right. So thank you for that. What partnerships or collaborations exist between New York City schools and industry organization to help address the shortage of CTE teachers?
So we do have the commissions that I spoke about briefly earlier. And these commissions are based on career clusters. These commissions consist of post-secondary partners as well as industry partners. Their role is to make sure that the people in the schools, the teachers, the APs, the principals, are prepared with feedback from industry to make sure that their programs are labor market-aligned and that they're keeping up with industry changes. And they're also giving advice on how to potentially recruit new teachers.
Thank you for that. Mr. Patterson, probably that one is going to be for you. For the after-school program, I understand that we have a lot of needs throughout our district. And you came from a district on East Flabush. So now I'm wondering, what are you doing in your position to make sure the programs are being placed in the school where actually there is inequities?
With our after-school programs, they are funded centrally. They're funded in two ways. They're funded by DYCD, then they're funded by New York City Public Schools. Once these schools receive the funding, they partnership with the CBOs. We have full, we give autonomy through the superintendents to the principals, that the principals are then going to know what their needs are because the principals are the ones that get rated on student performance. They're the ones, it's been like a shift under this chancellor, under Chancellor Banks, from, you know, this instructional model to this community model. So how do we serve not only children, but serve families? How do we serve communities? How does the school become a central hub in the community? How do superintendents become not just instructional leaders, but community leaders? And if you noticed, it's been a big shift from central and getting employees to go back into district offices closer to the community. So as the funding is provided, the system then goes into effect, giving the autonomy to superintendents and giving the autonomy to principals, to partnership with community-based organizations. We have some major ones out there that come in and service our students.
Thank you. With the increase of migrant in the city of New York, I find that it is a challenging time. Don't get me wrong, it's very difficult. But at the same token, during the summer, I'm very concerned for those kids that just arrived. What are we doing? Anybody, because you're the great thinker here, I have all of you here. So I want to know, is any plan to make sure the things, because it's the kids. One thing I have learned, as a parent, as a mother of four, when kids are bored, they go trouble. So are we making any strategy to address the increased flux of migrants that we have in the city of New York during the summertime especially? I know school closes soon.
Well, you know, what I will say is we have, again, partnership with DYCD. There is some arising that-
I know that, but not enough space.
Well, we should be, listen, we have schools throughout, right? We have programs that are throughout. That we should be able to accommodate. I'll tell you, and if there are pockets, we're going to work with DYCD to identify the pockets. And if need be, if other schools need to be opened up, then we'll get them open. Our concern is always students first. You know, we understand that, like, we understand that communities are in crisis and that families are struggling. And we understand that if we don't provide this access to opportunity for our most vulnerable population, that their future is at risk. So under the leadership of Chancellor Bank, I think that's what he's been all about. So I'm one that feels very confident that we definitely have the infrastructure to accommodate the students that we're receiving.
Thank you so much. Keep on thinking because those children are in our hands in the city of New York. All of us are responsible.
Absolutely.
So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, thank you so much, Chair, and good afternoon. So I'm today happy to see on the agenda, to have on the agenda, thank you, Chair, intro four thirty-two, which would require New York City Public Schools to provide families with information on after-school programs, which I'm happy to read that you support the intent of. So I apologize if this question was answered earlier, but could you share the number of children in New York City schools and the entire school system that are currently served by after-school programs?
So I do have the information on our middle school and high school-
Okay.
-students. And it's approximately two hundred, I have the exact number, if you give me a minute. One hundred and ninety thousand. I was going to say two hundred, but it is one hundred and ninety thousand students.
Hundred ninety thousand students. And how many middle school and high school students do we have? What's our denominator?
I'm sorry?
What, out of the total, what is the total number of middle and high school students?
That is the total number of middle school and high school students.
Okay, and how many are served by after-school programs?
I'm sorry, I'm just getting some clarity on the question. Okay. So we're serving sixty percent of them overall? In terms of exact numbers, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. And more importantly, given the district that I represent, how many, if you have the numbers today, how many middle school and high school students are receiving or eligible for free school lunch? And how many of those that are eligible for free school lunch are also receiving, are having after-school programs?
So correct me if I'm wrong. New York City, I believe the vast majority, I think we're a, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe almost all of our students in New York City are eligible for free lunch. We are a free city. We offer this for the vast majority of our students, if not all of our students. And in terms of the second part of your question, how many of those students are attending after-school programs? That number I would have to get back to you also. In terms of how many, and again, let me, just for clarity, how many students who receive free lunch attend after-school programs?
Yeah, and just to be very clear, my intention is to understand how many low-income students from black and brown neighborhoods, which I represent, how many of those are receiving after-school services? Because the last statistic that I remember was that sixteen percent of students that receive free or are eligible for free school lunch, right? By the federal definition of who is eligible to receive them. I understand New York City is generous, but the federal definition, only sixteen percent of these students are receiving after-school enrichment programs. So I wanted to, that's a twenty seventeen number, and I wanted to get the updated number from the New York City Department of Education. Four three two is an information bill. It's about distributing information to families. But of course, the broader question here and the intent is to understand, to get what is available out there to those who need it, but also to move toward a system where we have universal after-school one day. And there's legislation for that for another day, another discussion. But I just want to get the updated information from the Department of Education on what that access looks like for low-income students.
Listen, you represent the same community I do. So one hundred percent, we will get that information to you.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Quick question, just a quick follow-up. How do you collaborate with DYCD to develop and provide information about after-school programming?
Right. So I'd answered that earlier. With DYCD, we meet bi-weekly and we meet monthly. We've come up with a after-school guide. That's the guide that's going to be released in September for this school year, which is going to provide guidance on how to market, how to start, how to maintain effective after-school programs. DYCD also has a website that has information about all of their after-school programs as well as a Community Connect hotline, which is available in over one hundred and eighty languages. In addition, New York City Public Schools has a after-school@schools.nycgov email. So if anyone is having any issues, any questions, any concerns, any problems, they email us and we'll get back to them immediately with direct next steps in terms of the after-school.
I'm a parent who lives in District Forty, where twenty-five percent of my families do not have access to internet. So tell me how? I'm a low-income family who doesn't have access to internet. How am I going to get that information into my hands?
Absolutely. So again, we have that Community Connect hotline that's available in over one hundred and eighty languages. And what I would tell parents, if there's issues with phone service also, is to go up to the school. Backpack, speak to the school personnel. There will always be someone in every school to help you. As well as at the school, in terms of after-school, principals backpack letters home. That's like a very foundational effort, in multiple languages. So I would advise, if someone doesn't have internet, right? Which is an issue, and we know it's an issue. Hopefully they could call the Community Connect hotline, which is again, available in over one hundred and eighty languages. Hopefully they could go up to the school and they could get support from the parent coordinator, community liaison, or the school administrator, or a teacher. And then hopefully the school backpacks the letters home. I always did as a principal. I always made sure that for our entire population, that we made sure that letters that were at home were printed out in multiple languages.
Thank you for that. So what challenges are you going to face to distribute and publish materials to students at the start of each school year? When, you said you're going to start in the fall, where you're going to have a comprehensive list for after-school programming?
Well, a guide, but, I'm sorry, and you were asking about challenges that we-
To make sure that it's delivered on time, make sure that parents know that ahead of time.
Absolutely. So I think the challenges that we may have may go towards, like, if there's changes in program, right? After-school programming, that normally happens at the beginning of the year. So it's imperative that we're meeting with our partners, that we're finding out if there is any change that happened with the programming so that we can then take that information, update our list, because we have a list of all after-school programs, right? Who's eligible? How the application process works? So that we could update our list and then turnkey that information to our superintendent teams, who could get that information out to their, to the principals.
And how do you plan on monitoring that to see how effective and if you need to tweak along the way?
Yeah, I think communication with our partners is something that is crucial. I think working with our district offices to ensure the timely dissemination of the material. I think those are some areas that we have to be very vigilant over.
Thank you. We hope we get comprehensive. We've heard from some schools, I know I personally have heard from schools who do not have after-school programming. Since some of them are funded through DYCD and New York City Public Schools, how do schools who don't have after-school programming get them?
Okay. Okay, so the guide that we are releasing has all of the information for school leaders who do not have after-school programs on how to get the funding for those services. I would also like to add that there are a number of schools, a healthy number, and I can send my notes here, who are not centrally funded. So you do have schools that, like hundreds of schools, that receive their funding either through grant, state grant, so on and so forth, that are not centrally funded.
Thank you. This one is around dress code policy?
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the guide has been posted, so it is available.
As of when?
January. But we'll get the, we'll get the exact date and the link to you for the guide.
I'll look forward to it. Can you provide an overview on how many schools currently have dress code policies?
Yes, hi, thank you. Thank you for that question. So schools currently, dress codes policies are not mandated. It's not required. Schools, if they want to adopt the dress code policy, they do it in consultation with their school leadership teams.
How many?
We, Central does not track that number.
I don't track a lot of stuff. I'm going to be getting a lot of reporting bills. How many of these policies are readily accessible to students, parents through school websites?
So some schools does list this on their school's website, but it is not something, again, that is tracked because it's not mandated or required.
How does the, how does the Department of Education ensure that schools are complying with DOE's guidelines, dress code, particularly in relating to prohibitions, prohibits of generalization, generally national- prohibits of generalization, generally national, cultural, social, and identity biases?
So I have a LGBTQ director, Kalima, who you know. She has reviewed the dress code guidelines with a cross-functional team a couple years ago and helped create the gender guidelines. They were very essential in creating these guidelines to ensure that these guidelines does not impose any expectations based on gender identity. And I can have her come up and talk a little bit about that.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph. I'm Kalima McKenzie-Sims. I'm the manager of LGBTQ programs. So when I started a couple years ago, one of the first projects, one of the first initiatives that I was brought on to was to review revised dress code guidelines for schools that made sure that they were inclusive of gender identity, that it does not make assumptions on a person's body. Like instead of saying a shirt shouldn't show cleavage, it should say no low-cut shirts, for example. And so we liaised with community organizations like Girls for Gender Equity, PFLAG NYC, so they can cross-review these guidelines to make sure that they are equitable for students who are LGBTQ, transgender, students who are black, right, and have natural hair, who, making sure the language was appropriate for those groups as well. So, yes.
How does DOE handle instances where a student attire is unfairly targeted under the dress code? Is there a pathway to report that student can take if they feel unfairly dress code-based on their identity?
So there's many pathways that students can take. Any reports can be, again, to their respectful liaisons. It can be reported to superintendent offices. It can be reported directly to us, the Office of Safety and Youth Development. It can be reported to General Counsel, title non-coordinators, to the Office of Equal Opportunity. Just multiple pathways of reporting for students, to any trusted adults in the school community as well.
What is the current process for tracking and reporting disciplinary actions related to dress code violations?
It's reported in ORS, again, the only system, state-mandated system, state-recognized system in New York City Public Schools.
And have you engaged with students, parents, educators when developing or revising dress code policies?
Yes, and Chair Joseph, if I can just say that in ORS, that there are two codes in which it can fall under. And these particular codes, they're, it's an A8 for elementary school and a B9. And they are low-level infractions. And I just wanted to report to Counsel that in 2023, there was a grand total of 121 in both, for elementary and middle. And in 2023, '24 was a total of 244 total, okay? So I just wanted to report that. And the change was pretty much, last year, there was a, well, 20, the, there was a change of about 100. And that was because there was these new ski masks that came out last year, and approximately 60% was because of that. So I don't, I want Counsel to know why that large shift happened. So I'm sorry to cut you off from your next question.
No, not at all. That was, that was very important because my next question is going to follow up to that. And what specific restorative practice, if any, if you know of, are in place within schools to this, you know, to discuss self-expression through dress in relation to school dress code policies and handling of reports of noncompliance?
Yes, it's uniform, dress code, sorry. Dress code is a low-level infraction. So students cannot be suspended for not adhering to the dress code policy. What the discipline code allows is guidance and counseling, or parents could be called, or, you know, it's a conversation with the principal, but students cannot be suspended. The highest level of disciplinary action is a classroom removal, and that only happens if they violate it several times, like multiple times. So it's very rare. It's a, it's a low-level infraction.
I've seen schools have extra, for example, elementary, they would have extra uniforms on hand.
Absolutely. Like, that's the goal. It's, if it's, you know, you would, we want students to feel comfortable if they are out of dress code, like if they're doing something against the policy. If schools have extra clothes on deck, that's the goal, to make sure that students are comfortable, to, you know, offer them another set of clothing, to say, oh, turn your shirt inside out, just to make sure that the students feel comfortable in their clothing.
Yeah, mine forgot his tie home. He was able to get a new tie.
Exactly. Like, that's the goal. That's the goal. Not to make them feel uncomfortable or to call them out, just to make sure that they feel comfortable.
I told him when he started working on Wall Street, there won't be no extra tie in the Wall Street. All right, I'm going to make my, I have my group, my group of students here so they can happy. So how does New York City Public Schools currently allocate resources to ensure equitable access to extracurricular programs across all high schools? Hi.
Hi, thank you for that question. So just for clarity, are we referring to clubs in particular?
Clubs, newspapers, you know.
I know newspapers, your passion.
Yes.
I love newspapers.
Young people have to tell their stories. We keep telling them, let's create space for them and I give them the power of the pen. They're here, amazing. They're back there. See them waving? They were here, they advocated for themselves. They are the inspiration for this reso.
So clubs and extracurricular activities are school-based and funding is directly into the school's budget. So I wanted to speak with regards to how clubs come about. They are student-generated, based on student voice, students' wants, desires. Those are actually, the students say that they want a club. They are guided by Chancellor's regulations. They will present their, I guess, their desire for a club to their principal. And unless there is some reason that it does not meet Chancellor's regs, which is governed, those clubs are governed by government regs, Chancellor's regs, those clubs are to be recognized. So a student interest, meeting with the principal. It's also, there's also a pedagogue that also oversees the actual club. Usually, students generate interest from their peers. And then from there, they work to implement the club within the school system.
So how do, how do you support teachers administering and implementing programs such as a newspaper?
So newspapers, so I'm just, I'm going to put on a principal hat and just think about my interactions with schools who have newspapers. Just in seeing some of our schools who absolutely had interest, I've seen schools who actually have courses that actually are aligned to having journalism within their school system. So we support principals just in having those conversations and actually when we go in and have our supervisory meetings. We also meet with our students just to get their input, to see what's happening in their schools. What are some of your interests? Speaking definitely about how student voice is generated. How do you get your voice out? We have speak with regards to what's happening in our literature classes, how we can also expand on getting our student voice out, and definitely looking at how we can have ways to expand just the opportunities and access for our students to, across the city, to engage in that process of being journalists.
So what measures are in place to facilitate introduction of new literacy and journalism training program for teachers and students? Is that a Chancellor question?
That would be a chance. I would take that to him.
I'll take it back. So how can New York City Public Schools ensure all high schools, regardless of their location or student demographic, have infrastructure at least to support students to start and sustain a newspaper?
I would say at the least that you have to have the pedagogues to support just the students.
He's in the back.
So and again, also, when I think about anything that has anything to do with students, it's about their interests and just ensuring that we're providing our students to access to anything that they're interested in. Because we want to have our well-rounded students and we want to make sure that when we send them out into the world, that they have engaged in every possible activity that is going to support their development. So I would say just in our district offices and having the conversations with our superintendents and just in surveying the schools to see if they have the actual resources and to determine what the resources are to support them actually implementing and putting new school newspapers in place. Also, to connect them with schools who have newspapers, to just hear about some of those best practices and to help them, support them in the actual implementation and the rollout. So there's a myriad of things that can be done to support them. But absolutely, when we look at and we think about what's happening with New York City Reads, newspapers is right up there in support with our high school and middle school students in alignment with New York City Reads.
And this is in connection with New York City Reads and our writing skills? If we want to bring it up, this is one way right here.
We'll take that back, too.
Take that back to the Chancellor.
Absolutely.
Shout out to the Chancellor. Hearing all of my New York City Public Schools newspaper, it would be ideal, I think, as an educator, to have kids start telling their stories, right? They read it every day in other people's stories. But if students can tell their, their point of view, carry their opinions, it'd be amazing. They're amazing bunch of students that I met who lobbied us. And here we are. I'm so proud of them. They're back there. Wave, wave.
We love students.
Yeah, absolutely. This is, they are the reason why I do this work.
I love them.
This is why I do this work, and that's why I fight so hard for them. It's never personal. It's really about the children for me.
Absolutely.
About the young people. So, thank you, New York City Public Schools. I go now? I go now? All right.
Folks, if we could take the conversations outside, we're getting ready to continue. Once again, if we could settle down and find a seat, we are getting ready to continue.
Thank you. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind the public that this is a formal government proceeding, that the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recording as testimony, but may submit transcript of such recording to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing records. If you wish to speak today, please fill out a form, fill out an appearance card with Sergeant-at-Arms, wait to be recognized. When recognized, you'll have two minutes to speak today on hearing topic intros 118-266-399-432-577-733-771 and 797 and Resolution 95, Resolution 292 and 372. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. The first panel. If I, if I mistakenly mispronounce your name, please give me grace. Akib Gondal, Gondal. Salam Basq. Liza Greenberg. Camilla Sosa. Derry Oliver and Sophie Mode.
My name is Sophie Mo, oh, thank you so much, sorry. My name is Sophie Mode, and I'm a graduate of Millennium Brooklyn High School and a college fellow with the New York City Youth Journalism Coalition. I'm here today to introduce some of the amazing student leaders of the Coalition, who are here today to testify in support of Resolution 372. Now that we're here today, we also would like to note our full support for Councilmember Stevens' introduction, 797. It's encouraging to hear that the DOE supports sharing data on clubs and organizations, and we will follow up directly to ensure journalism clubs and organizations are counted and published. This is critical in bridging the gap in access and has long been one of our priority asks of the Department of Education. Thank you so much for your time today.
Good morning. My name is Akeeb Gondal, and I am a junior at the Bronx High School of Science, and I am a leader with the New York City Youth Journalism Coalition. Since my sophomore year, I have been a writer for the Science Survey, the Bronx High School of Science's student newspaper. The stories I've covered and the perspective I've gained from my time as a staff reporter are invaluable to me. And I feel that it is an absolute injustice that so many teens in New York City high schools, with the desire to inform the public about what they feel is worth understanding, are unable to do so. It was through my articles and the topics that I latched on to that my interests in art history and urban studies began to blossom, providing me with insight as to what I want to focus on going forward, both in college and in my personal life. It seems that everything I write about sticks with me long after each issue is published. And I now understand more about myself, both as a creative and as a person, than I would have if my school only offered traditional English classes. The satisfaction in piecing a story together to create a final product that is not only informative, but also sprinkled with reflections of the writer's personality is a feeling that is unmatched outside of journalism. And to think that nearly 75% of high schools in New York City do not have a school newspaper, it is not only unfair to students with stories to share with the world, but also a tragedy in the sense that so many incredible writing pieces constructed by the youth are lost forever, reduced to simply what could have been. We're here today not just to testify in support of Resolution 0372, but to place it in a larger context of a citywide student movement to address the inequity. In partnership with BLAC, we led a day of action right here at City Hall in April, with more than 50 students leaving school to raise awareness about youth journalism equity. We held a press conference. Shout out to Councilmembers Narcisse and Bronx Science Alumni Councilmember Dinowitz for standing with us even in the rain. We also met with more than 20 council members and staff, including councilmembers Hanif and Lewis. Students are ready to make their voices heard, and this resolution is a critical step in signaling that the city council is behind them. Thank you for your time.
You turned it off. Hi, my name is Salma Bach. I'm a senior at Forest Hills High School in Queens, New York, and I'm also a leader with the New York City Youth Journalism Coalition. Had I not joined my student newspaper in my junior year, I would not be speaking before you today because it has equipped me with so many tools, it has made me ambitious and outspoken and has encouraged me to challenge and criticize the world around me. Um I'd like to establish that the newsroom is a classroom in its own right. Being editor-in-chief of my school paper has taught me how to manage a team, uh how to communicate effectively, and also how to be perceptive of the world around me. Most high schools in New York City don't have newspapers, despite New York City being regarded as a beacon for news media. In an era marked by rapid change and unprecedented internet access, who will be our future storytellers? When only seven percent of New York City schools with the highest poverty rates have newspapers, how can we expect that the stories that must be told will be told? School newspapers are transformative and more important than ever to students and the world that they live in. We refuse to let this the status quo stand and Resolution 0372 is part of a bigger story. This spring, we launched Journalism for All, an ambitious public-private initiative to bring journalism programs to every New York City public high school, starting with thirty schools in the next eighteen months. Nearly forty schools have indicated interest already and we are working directly with councilmembers to nominate schools in their district to be a part of Journalism for All. A special shout out to Councilmember Gutierrez, who nominated Williamsburg Preparatory High School and Bushwick Leaders High School for Academic Excellence. Your cosponsorship for Resolution 0372 signals to the DOE and that the coun, that the council is serious about addressing the inequity in youth journalism. Fourteen councilmembers have already cosponsored, including Councilmember Schulman, who I will be interning with this summer. Thank you for your time.
My name is Camilla Sosa. I'm a junior at Uncommon Collegiate Charter High School and a leader with the New York City Youth Journalism Coalition. For the past three years, talks surrounding a potential publication in my school continues to be spoken about as if it is a distant dream. I would imagine the stories we could tell and the perspectives we could share in this hypothetical newspaper that felt impossibly out of reach. I constantly wish that one day the students at my school would finally be able to share their stories and the stories that mattered to them and be able to feel heard. I understood that our school was underfunded and I knew that there were so many details out of our control, but I also knew the importance of student expression and why it is imperative to have a place to unleash these voices. It was not until I started exploring journalism in New York City that I realized the extent of this gap in access. I was able to experience the power of youth voice and how capable students were of making change through their writings and talents. Students shouldn't have to rely on the game of chance that journalism equity is in New York City. Students shouldn't have to get lucky to start a career in journalism. Student voice is the future and it should be treated as such. In early June, we laid out the Journalism for All vision to one hundred and fifty teachers, funders, policymakers, and journalists at the Paley Center. We were joined by special guests Nicole Hannah Jones, Councilmember Rita Joseph, and Councilmember Silvina Brooks-Powers, who announced her Journalism for All school nomination onstage. It was a symbol of immense momentum behind youth journalism equity and this resolution is a critical step in showing that the City Council hears and supports our vision for a school journalism program at every high school. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Liza Greenberg and I'm a junior at Bronx Science. For the past year, I've been involved with the New York City Youth Journalism Coalition. I've been an avid student journalist since middle school when I created a newspaper called the Center School Gazette. Now, in high school, I've worked on my paper, the Science Survey, for two years, this past year as managing editor. Student journalism is central to my identity. It has made me who I am, someone who looks for stories, dives into the facts, and raises topics for discussion. Journalism can prepare students to ask the hard questions and in turn handle controversial and loaded topics delicately and fairly. By providing a shared base of information and ideas, student journalism outlets can also foster a sense of community that unites diverse, citywide student bodies and provides a counterweight to the polarizing effects of social media. Newspapers can be a venue about events and to celebrate students' accomplishments and talents, be it in sports, writing, humor, or photography. I just came from taking the U.S. History Regents, but being here is a lesson in government and civic engagement, and journalism is too. The lack of journalism opportunities in New York City is a story that's important to me and I was able to write about it with my friend and co-advocate Derry in Teen Vogue. This is just another example of the great momentum around this issue that you can be part of by supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Derry Oliver. I am a senior at Cobay Hall High School and a leader with the New York City Youth Journalism Coalition. Colleges may see me as student number three hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-eight, but I have a different story. I'm a victim of systemic inequ, inequity where I lack access to journalism program. I've been told to look harder, only to find the New York Times Summer Journalism Workshop costs thousands of dollars per week. I'm told to pursue my passions and yet I am not given the opportunity to do so. I am told a school is where you learn the most and yet I'm not given the opportunity to do so. I do not want a future young journalist to struggle the same way I did. I could have done internships, college credit, possibly even become editor-in-chief. However, my playing field was unequal the moment I came into high school. The access to a journalism program shouldn't be a privilege, it should be a right. The council's support for the student-led movement has been critical in catalyzing private philanthropy pick support. In addition to students, educators, and service providers who are part of our movement, we are working with foundations to raise funds to launch the first cohort of Journalism for All. We must keep the momentum going. Your support for this education, resolution is critical, but not the end. We will be back after the budget is passed, ready to work with you to nominate schools in your district and commit to supporting them with their discretionary funding in fiscal year 2026. We need urgent, continuous, dedicated action on behalf of the students of New York City. We will now, we'll now all be happy to take your questions. Thank you for your time.
What type of support does your school provide, um helping to establish journalism club and connections to internship opportunities?
Um I can speak about this, at least at our high school and part of our school newspaper, our journalism advisor uh posts opportunities on our Google Classroom for different internships, um including paid inter, or internships with stipends and and free programs so that students in the journalism program can pursue those opportunities. So I know he posted something from um the Jewish Telegraphic Agency and other scholarship opportunities and things along those lines.
In contrast, my school does not have a publication and although there are sometimes uh posts about certain uh internships, there isn't very, uh there isn't much highlight on journalist, uh journalism internships and that's a shame. Uh there, there's also no highlight on these internships due to the fact that we don't have a publication, so there's not really any students that they can, get students to apply from.
Um I would also like to add to that where most of the time I've heard about journalism opportunities through a friend or a classmate and that's honestly what led me to learn about the Bell and also the Youth Journalism Coalition. Instead of my school, I learned it through a student and at most what I've learned about journalism via school is at a career day um fair last year where they invited a journalist in, but that's at most what happened. We didn't get any follow-ups, we didn't receive any form of way to contact them. I know one girl at my school who definitely wants to be a journalist, however, she doesn't even know where to start, the school doesn't offer anything um on their end to help us with that.
So we're basically building the plane as we're flying it, pretty much, right?
Yeah.
How much funding are you looking for in FY26?
So we're looking to match funding from both the City Council and private foundations, but from City Councilmembers, we're looking for ten to fifteen thousand dollars of discretionary funding.
See, they came prepared. They did their homework. They know what they want, they know how much it's gonna cost. So the adults in the room, I will make sure I like that. Thank you, thank you for coming prepared and thank you for fighting for your, for your space, right? For you to be seen and heard and to tell stories. I don't want to tell your story, I want you to be able to tell your story. And congratulations to each and every one of you, you guys did amazing at the gala. You got, you got the, you had the best keynote speaker ever, I love her. Um so thank you and you already know I'm your champion and your ally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next panel, um Alena Daniels, Aman God, Rocky Sai, Amanda Martinez, Cordira Coles, Jasmina Salomova, Isabel Chow. And if I butchered the name, please forgive me. And thank you, New York City Public Schools, for staying behind to listen to our young people. Make sure you're connecting with them too.
I thought I was loud enough. Help my voice, okay. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and the members and staff of the Committee on Education. My name is Cordira Coles, I'm the Director of Policy at Girls for Gender Equity. And I will be reading a testimony on behalf of student H, A, Student S, sorry, who cannot be here, but she is a part of our Young Women's Advisory Council Program. Student S is offering testimony because she has been impacted by dress codes at her school. Start testimony. I attend a school with a uniform policy and I've seen a lot of unfairness surrounding how dress codes are enforced. I've been dress coded multiple times. The uniform policy doesn't take any personal style into consideration, making it difficult to express myself. The enforcement of dress codes is unpredictable since sometimes they are enforced strictly and other times not at all. Once a teacher chased me around the school to dress coat me even though I didn't need to wear a uniform that day, this has made me fearful that the teacher have, of the teacher having personal bias towards me and how that will affect if I get dress coded in the future or not. My school often claims to promote leadership and self-independence, yet enforces a strict uniform policy that makes all of us wear the same clothes and colors. The cost of uniforms is another issue. Many students cannot afford them. I've seen a student stitch the school logo onto a polo shirt to meet the requirements. When you get dress coded, you are pulled out of class, asked why you're not in uniform, and sent to detention after school. The disciplinary measures seem to depend on the enforcing teacher or staff member's mood that day. The dress code is also not inclusive, especially for the large Muslim population at our school. Teachers also tend to dress code based on how nice an outfit looks. These experiences have created an uncomfortable atmosphere for me at school. I often feel anxious about whether what I'm wearing will get me dress coded. Overall, the situation is unfair and upsetting as there is no consistency and enforcement. For solutions, I recommend involving the student council in writing, um writing dress code policies to ensure student representation. Uniforms should be made affordable and faculty should receive training to avoid cultural insensit, insensitivity and acknowledge their own biases. I also recommend council passing the two bills, 118 and 292. These bills are really important to me as solutions to resolving the issues that occur as a result of unfair dress coding. The reporting required in these bills will create accountability and make sure that everyone has a clear definition of what acceptable, what is acceptable, which will promote equity across schools. Inclusivity in dress codes is also necessary to understand the different needs of each student. Thank you for your time, consideration, and testimony.
Good afternoon. Um my name is Alena Daniels. I'm a white queer neurodivergent non-binary trans woman and teacher. I've been teaching at New York City School, Middle and High Schools for twelve years. I've taught science, activism, sex education, robotics, algebra, engineering, queer media, biology, and been a lunch lady. Currently, I'm the co-founder and executive director of Transformative Schools. Throughout my career, I've observed marginalized students and teachers being policed by dress codes in ways that privileged community members are not judged. As an eighth grade advisor, black and brown, queer and fat students often came to me upset that they'd been punished for wearing tank tops and crop tops while their skinny white cis straight peers were not. These, together, we researched the history of dress codes and discussed solutions. We came to the belief that due to implicit bias in our oppressive world, no dress code will ever be enforced equitably. We decided to advocate for a new dress code that simply stated, "We trust students to choose what to wear to school, please don't be hateful." After significant organizing, after significant organizing, including teach-ins and showing up to school wearing t-shirts with slogans like "Girls Don't Dress for Boys" and "Is This Against Dress Code Too?", we convinced the school leadership to trepidatiously adopt our proposed dress code. Four years later, there hasn't been a problem. I'm here today to support Cordira and Girls for Gender Equity as the leading CBO doing this work at the city level, as a science teacher who loves data and yet only had anecdotes to share above. I want to especially thank Cordira and GGE for the ginormous amount of effort collecting data and sharing their research reports. As I love to tell students, science and math are some of the most powerful tools to change the world. While GGE collected data about the ways that dress codes themselves are oppressive, we need to ensure that we are counting kids who are targeted by dress codes. This includes counting trans kids, especially trans girls, especially those who are additionally marginalized by race, religion, body size, or other historic marginalizations. As we've repeatedly heard today, gender modality is not currently collected in any of the DOE data, including about dress codes or bullying. However, we do know that three percent of NYC youth are transgender or non-binary and that eighty-five percent of trans youth feel unsafe at school. Please approve Resolution 0292 and also Resolution 0266 to ensure that NYC DOE is not erasing some of our most marginalized young people and then pass these resolutions and other information gathering resolutions to provide us with data to prove who's being unfairly punished. This will allow us to make targeted interventions in schools to limit harm to students. Students can learn math and science if they don't feel safe and comfortable at school. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and the members and staff of the Committee on Education. My name is Eman Gad and I'm the Policy Coordinator here at GGE. But I'm testifying today on behalf of Favor Adosa. She is a part of the Speakers' Bureau at Girls for Gender Equity. She's not able to be here today because of her Regents. So as you heard, GGE is an intergenerational organization based in Brooklyn, New York. It's committed to the all-around development of black girls and gender expansive youth of color. GGE has been a leader in the conversation around gender-based violence and ending school push-up for close to two decades. I will now be testifying in the first person as Favor. I am offering testimony today in support of Intro 118 and Resolution 292, which if passed would help all schools. I also offer testimony to demonstrate the positive outcomes that arise from implementing good policies that include student perspectives and to highlight the profound impact of allowing individuals to express themselves and develop their unique styles. Growing up, I had the freedom to wear whatever I wanted to school. In fact, I often wondered if my school even had a dress code policy because it was never a constraint for me. This freedom was incredibly beneficial as it helped me develop my own sense of style and allowed me to express myself in unique ways. Being able to experiment with my clothing choices during these formative years played a significant role in shaping my personal identity. I now have a strong sense of style, something that might not have been possible if I had been restricted by a strict dress code. High school is a critical time for self-discovery and it's important to set a foundation that allows students to feel comfortable with themselves and their style. Life doesn't end in high school and there isn't a dress code once you leave. By giving students the freedom to explore their personal style during high school, we help them build confidence that will benefit them long after graduation. Because of my experimentation, I was able to develop a sense of confidence and style beyond high school. Passing Intro 118 and Resolution 292 will ensure- will ensure that all schools have a dress code that allows their students to experience this growth and development. Alongside these bills, schools should train teachers and staff on how to best handle students who do not adhere to dress code policies in ways that do not impede their self-expression and confidence growth. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and the members and staff of the Committee on Education. My name is Jasmina Salomova and I'm part of the Young Women's Advisory Council Program at Girls for Gender Equity. GGE is an intergenerational organization based in Brooklyn, New York, committed to the all-around development of Black girls and gender expansive youth of color. GGE has been a leader in conversation around gender-based violence and ending school pushout for close to two decades. I am offering testimony today because I wanna make sure young people such as myself feel confident and safe in their clothing and self-expression and also acknowledge the blatant racism, body discrimination, and misogyny behind dress codes. I support passing both Intro 118 and Resolution 292 to make sure that there is a system in place to hold schools accountable in their implementation of dress code policies and to ensure that dress codes are inclusive of diverse cultures, bodies, gender expressions, and social orientations. In middle school, my first introduction to dress codes came when my friend who had a curvier body type was dress coded for wearing a tube top. This confused me because other girls in my school did not get in trouble for their tube tops or tank tops. The only difference was their body types. That's when I started realizing that the dress code targeted students with specific body types. Later on, in high school, I was sitting in gym class once when my Latina friend walked in with an oversized wrinkled school branded shirt, upset that she had been dress coded for a low cut top. White girls in my school with similar body types were wearing the same tops but were not subjected to the same level of punishment by school staff. The racist double standard was clear. The gender double standard also became clear too because the only time I've ever witnessed or heard of a boy getting dress coded was when my male peer took off his shirt in the lunchroom and only put it back on after he got dress coded. Additionally, I've heard countless complaints from my peers about unsettling interactions with male teachers and all instances of the dress code enforcement were carried out by female staff at my school. Given such discriminatory applications, it must be the case that dress codes are not protecting students, especially not young women, but rather protecting instructors. Because of these experiences, I avoid dressing the way I want to in order to avoid harsh and humiliating punishments that may come with being dress coded. To address this, I ask that both the Intro 118 and Resolution 292 be passed. I also ask that before developing a new dress code or reexamining existing one, schools should consult with their school leadership team, parents, and various members of the student body in order to ensure that different perspectives and identities are considered and respected. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and the members and staff of the Committee on Education. My name is Amanda Martinez, delivering testimony on behalf of student Natalie Henry, who couldn't be here today due to regents examination. She is a part of the Speakers Bureau Program at Girls for Gender Equity. GGE is an intergenerational organization based in Brooklyn, New York, committed to the all-around development of Black girls and gender expansive youth of color. GGE has been a leader in the conversation around gender-based violence and ending school pushout for close to two decades. I am offering my testimony today in support of Intro 118 and Resolution 292 because it is a common experience for women and girls to be subject to harassment on the basis of what they wear and if my testimony can lead to the safe exploration of style and gender expression for future generations, then I'd like to contribute. Of course, there are some valid intentions behind the creation of dress codes, but their enforcement has unfairly targeted and victimized young women. I didn't learn about the term "dress code" until middle school when I noticed peers in schools were getting tapped for wearing certain things like tank tops, skirts, shorts, or crop tops. There wasn't a clear dress code policy though, so its enforcement seemed to have come from school staff members' own unpredictable, personal, and sometimes biased opinions. The dress code was enforced so frequently and so often arbitrarily that a silent protest took place in which students, mainly female, began intentionally wearing the items that one would customarily get dress coded for. Our school was closed-minded in terms of creative pursuits, hence their rejection of students' creative expression. The lack of creative exploration and expression caused me to leave that school for another school that did value creativity and individuality in both the staff and student body. In conclusion, if dress codes seek uniformity, then such policies should be enforced uniformly. Dress code standards must apply to all genders, races, and bodies fairly. That is why I believe a system for holding schools accountable for their dress code policies and necessa- is necessary and why I'm advocating for Intro 118 and Resolution 292 to be passed today.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and the members and the staff of the Committee on Education. My name is Rocky Sai and I am reading on behalf of Raina Young. Um, Raina, she's an alumni of the National Agenda for Black Girls Steering Committee at Girls for Gender Equity and she's also partner. She recently graduated with a master's degree in public policy and Girls for Gender Equity was a partner organization for her Kepsorn Project. With their support, she produced a research report entitled, "Dress Codes, Pushouts, and Self-Expression: An Examination of New York City Public Schools", where she did a qualitative review of over one hundred school dress codes policies from all five boroughs and assessed them based on their adherence to the Department of Education guidance and audit criterias of notes. See Appendix A attached to this testimony. She developed her own evaluation system and rubric because she noticed that the Department of Education did not have any reporting metrics to accompany the guidance that they issued on dress code policies. While it is evident that the department value inclusivity, the absence of an accountability structure for school leaves much to be desired in practice. She found that a significant percentage of dress code policies are not publicly available online. In our, in her sample of the one hundred twenty-eight secondary school that reported suspending at least one student for dress code violation between two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three, only sixty-eight schools had digitally accessible dress code policies. This is gravely concerning as DOE has suspension data but not data regarding the language used in the policies themselves and there is no way to assess if the school policy met the DOE expectation of gender-neutral culturally competent dress codes. Passing Intro 118 to, and Resolution 292 is crucial step in making the inclusive school environment the DOE outlined in their guidance. A reality, this reporting mechanism will not only encourage schools to uphold the standard of the DOE when it comes to dress codes, but can also permit collaboration and sharing the best practice among school. In her review, she found some inspiring example of school explicitly stating that they value students' ability to express, to express themselves as a tenant of their dress code policies. While schools are environments for learning, they are also an arena for young people to develop a sense of self and exist in a safe space. It is up to the adults to foster that environment and to take action to preserve it in the face of adversity. With that being said, Raina urged the committee to pass Intro 118 and Resolution 292 in order to protect and uplift the stories you have heard from the youth present today and thousands of other students who are your future constituents. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members and staff of the Committee on Education. My name is Isabel Chow and I am a recent graduate of the Masters in Social Work Program at Hunter College and a social work intern with the Sisters in Strength Program at Girls for Gender Equity. I am testifying today in support of Intro 118 and Resolution 292. While I'm not currently a student of the New York City Public School System, I can speak on my experience, um, I have working with students and the knowledge I gained researching my graduate thesis paper on the experiences of Black girls in schools. The lived realities of identifying as a young femme of color comes with sexism, adultism, xenophobia, and racism. Simultaneously, many case studies have shown that school climate plays a large role in the outcomes of students in that school. Being that dress code is something that can affect anyone implies that it plays a large role in the learning environment that policies create. Passing Intro 118 and Resolution 292 would address these issues that young people face at the intersections of race, class, gender, and dress codes. Specifically, Intro 118 will allow policies to be more accessible and equitable through information sharing and open dialogue on representation and reporting of dress codes in schools. Additionally, passing Resolution 292 will alter the way we view the impacts of dress code on our students through inclusion of diverse backgrounds. The truth is implicit bias, exclusionary policies, and subjective enforcement keep students out of the learning environment and hinder their success in schools. Alignment and teacher training across district schools is a huge step towards bridging the gap between diversity of students and school regulations. Schools should be a place where we grant students expression and autonomy over their lives as important members of our society. In order to do this, we need more explicit and transparent dress code regulations that students, parents, and school personnel are all aware of to better integrate, integrate the community impacted. For these reasons, my ultimate recommendation is for the city council to pass the two dress code related bills, Intro 118 and Resolution 0292, to create safer and more supportive learning environments for all students. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you all. I have two questions. What, what's the process of disputing a dress code violation at your school? Is there any faculty or staff you can talk to when you feel that you've been unfairly dress coded? Dress coded?
At my school, there is no disputing a dress code violation. Uh, normally, we're given, if it's like a first-time offender, we're given clothes to cover up and if it's not, then it usually leads to in-school suspension or your parents come to pick you up.
I've since graduated from high school, but two years ago, my school was Townsend Harris High School, where there was no recourse for contesting what was called a demerit, which was a permanent mark on your record for any dress code violation. Um, and those permanent marks, they would add up very quickly and you would get banned from prom from graduation. Uh, but there was no recourse for contesting demerits, at least when I was attending.
There's no way to make it up after you've met the... You know how you can earn back your, let's say they take away prom? Was there any way to earn it back? Or it was just demerit, demerit?
I know demerits expired after one year, or, but if they were very serious and they never expired. Um, otherwise, I don't know of anyone that ever got a demerit off of their record.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. So thank you all. That was my questions. Thank you. So proud of y'all guys. The next, um, panelist is Sarah Part and Megan Johansson.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Sarah Part and I am the Senior Policy Analyst at Advocates for Children of New York. I'm here to testify about four of the bills on today's agenda. Firstly, AFC supports Intro 266, which will require the creation of a Bullying Prevention Task Force. AFC hears from many families of students who have experienced bullying, harassment, or discrimination at school and our written testimony includes two recommendations for further strengthening the bill. We also urge the city to include five million for the mental health continuum and an additional six million for restorative justice practices in the final fiscal year 2025 budget as both initiatives play an important role in preventing and addressing bullying. We appreciate the attention the council and the public advocate have given to school accessibility and agree with the underlying goal of Intro 399, which would require annual reporting on compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. As AFC detailed in a report last year, two-thirds of New York City schools are still not fully accessible to students, parents, and educators with physical disabilities. Until the day the city reaches full ADA compliance, transparency about the accessibility status of individual school buildings is crucial and we would be happy to partner with the council and the public advocate's office to strengthen Intro 399. More immediately, the most important step the council can take to ensure that the ADA has real meaning in the lives of New Yorkers with disabilities is to ensure that the 2025 to 2029 capital plan allocates an additional four hundred and fifty million for a total investment of one point two five billion for school accessibility projects. AFC supports Intro 733, which would require annual reporting on career and technical education programs. English language learners and students with disabilities have historically been underrepresented in the city's CTE programs and at a time when New York City Public Schools is expanding career-connected learning, public data reporting can help hold the city accountable for eliminating barriers and ensuring all students have equitable access to CTE. Our written testimony, um, includes several recommendations for amending the bill to help make the data produced as useful as possible. Finally, we support Intro 771, which would require the distribution of information on interpretation services. Too often, parents who have limited English proficiency do not receive the interpretation and translation services they need to be able to participate in their children's education. In addition to moving the bill forward, we urge the council to ensure that the final budget includes four million for the Immigrant Family Communications and Outreach Initiative, which is currently escorted by expiring city funding. We appreciate the council's work on these bills and your efforts in the final week of budget negotiations. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Johansson. I'm a law student intern at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest or NLP in the Disability Justice Unit. Thank you Chairman Joseph and Education Committee members for your time and attention today in allowing us to speak on Intro Bill Number 399, which promotes school accessibility and compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act and local nondiscrimination law. NLP interacts with students with disabilities and their families on a daily basis and we hear about the difficulties they, they face in receiving services at school. The availability of accessible schools and programs within the schools is critical to students receiving an appropriate education. For reasons discussed in testimony by Advocates for Children, we ask the city council to promote accessibility in New York City's public schools for people with physical disabilities, including students, their families, teachers, administrators, and anyone who needs access to schools. Of course, the cost of making schools accessible must be reflected in the city's budget. In addition to physical accessibility, city council must ensure that data about placement and services available to students with disabilities are accessible to the entire community. As discussed in a recent NLP report, there are more than seven thousand students in New York City education system who are classified as having emotional disabilities, or ED. NLP testified identified an urgent need for the Department of Education to collect data on these students, including the fact that Black and Latino students are classified with ED at vastly disproportionate rates relative to their percentage in school populations. Children with disabilities deserve the city's commitment to investing in their education, both in terms of physical access and access to critical data. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your, for your recommendations on the bill. We'll definitely be reaching out. Thank you. Next panel, Usain Yadabari, Sunita Wiswanath, Mark Fowler, Yura Takad, Hermit Kambojo, if I misspell, please forgive me, Dr. Henry Goldschmidt.
Um, good afternoon. Um, Education Committee Chair Rita Joseph. Um, my name is Usain Yadabari. Um, Islamophobia post nine eleven was quite high in our public school system for a Black Muslim student like, like myself. Saddam Hussein, terrorists, Osama. Those are a few Islamophobic incidents, um, and insults that students thought were jokes. So we're here requesting that Resolution 0095, um, finally pass the Education Committee and the City Council. Uh, calling for religious diversity curriculum to be instituted for K through twelve students, for professional development for those educators, um, to be religiously responsive to all the like religious, different, different religious practices within our city and then for also reporting and, um, like we were talking about before, dress codes to be accommodating for students and any bullying to be condemned. Um, you would think there'd be a tremendous difference in 2024 after the landscape of bullying and religious indifference within schools, but NYCPS reports highlight the urgency for our legislation. Three hundred sixty-seven religious bias incidents were recorded between September 2022 and June 2023. This data is available thanks to Local Law 51. We have to wait until the new data comes out for this current school year, but from the chancellor's own mouth at the congressional hearing, um, since October seventh, there has been two hundred and eighty-one bias incidents in New York City public schools. And approximately thirty of those have been, thirty percent of those have been Islamophobic, forty-two percent of those have been anti-Semitic, and that was on May eighth. So that's over the course of what, maybe six months? That number should be zero. Uh, no matter what's happening in the world, there is work and there is work being done in NYCPS to meet the moment, but this shouldn't just meet this moment, it should meet every moment. Education policy is extremely difficult, but I think it's imperative, even though resolutions are symbolic, for our city's legislators to make a statement in support of efforts to promote religious diversity understanding in schools for students and adults. Resolution 0095 was formerly Resolution 476 and before that, 1257. For us, this must be the last number. This... For us, this must be the last number this resolution has, because this statement needs to be made, not just by our coalition, but our city council, to say inclusivity and religious diversity are not just tolerated, but supported. I urge the city council to recognize the importance of Resolution 0095. It's a defining moment for our city to affirm its values of respect and inclusivity. Your support is crucial for the well-being of our communities and for the future of our children. We hope this passes the Ed Committee and passes the next possible state of hearing to be into law. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Reverend Mark Fowler. I'm the CEO of the Tannenbaum Center for Interreligious Understanding. I also want to say that Tannenbaum is a secular and non-sectarian not-for-profit, and while Resolution 95 does directly call on collaboration with faith-based organizations, I think that there are a number of organizations in the space that are both faith-aligned as well as faith-specific. As a community, we know that educating students about religious differences creates societies that are safer from intolerance and hatred and bullying, and in real time, we're seeing the acts of anti-Jewish and anti-Muslim hate a great deal in response to the war between Israel and Hamas, but not solely. And that actually does not cover the numbers of people who are experiencing religious-based hate that's not being reported, that are not being reported to schools or other institutions. These are just the ones that we know. Regarding Chancellor Banks's statements and his testimony before Congress, we acknowledge that schools have experienced these 281 bias incidents, but when we were listening to the testimony earlier by the Department of Education, there didn't seem to be consistency about the tracking of incidences being reported by students and parents and disaggregating that data to figure out where are these complaints coming from and who's not reporting. All of us here, as part of this coalition, are making it clear that religious hate is not to be tolerated, and nobody wants to advocate for that. But at the same time, there's a responsibility within the Department of Education, within all city agencies, to actually condemn religious discrimination against students when it happens and to create classrooms where young people develop the social and emotional learning skills that they need. I'll just say that I was a public education teacher for 11 years. I taught high school. I was a coordinator of Student Affairs for the Brooklyn Conference of Knight High School. I did my pre-service education at Duke University. I did untold numbers of professional development with the Department of Education, and not once was there any provision for the diversity of religious beliefs, practices that I would encounter and need to support as a learning professional. So, as a native New Yorker, but also as a former teacher and as the CEO of Tannenbaum, we strongly recommend that the city council adopt Resolution 95. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, and thank you for holding this hearing on Resolution 95 in support of religious diversity education in New York City's public schools. Excuse me. I'm Dr. Henry Goldschmidt. I'm the Director of Programs at the Interfaith Center of New York and Director of the Religious Worlds of New York Summer Institute for Teachers, a program funded by the National Endowment for the Humanities that helps K-12 teachers from throughout the U.S. teach about religious diversity. Many of my colleagues will speak today about the experiences of bullying and harassment faced by far too many young New Yorkers. The Interfaith Center of New York shares their concerns, and we urge the city council, as well as the Department of Education, to support religious diversity education as an essential step to address bullying against religious minorities in our public schools. In my remarks, however, I'd like to focus on the many benefits of religious diversity education for all young New Yorkers. Given the First Amendment framework that appropriately governs our public schools, it's essential for the city council to understand that religious diversity education is not just intended to benefit religious students. Indeed, the academic study of religion can contribute to a number of the DOE's fundamental educational goals. In order to be truly educated in American history, global studies, literature, or the arts, our students need a rich understanding of religion and religious diversity. How, for example, can they hope to understand the African-American Civil Rights Movement without a basic knowledge of the Black Church? In order to succeed in their professional lives, our students need the religious literacy required to build relationships with diverse colleagues. How, for example, can they work effectively and respectfully with observant Jews or Muslims without a basic knowledge of kosher and halal dietary laws? Sorry, just another minute. And in order to participate in civic life, our students need an empathic understanding of their diverse neighbors' beliefs and values. Religious diversity education is thus essential to the health of our multicultural democracy. For all of these reasons, all of these benefits for all students, secular and religious alike, the study of religion in public schools is clearly permissible under the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment. Indeed, in the 1963 Supreme Court decision that banned school-sponsored devotional Bible reading in public schools, the court stated, quote, "It might well be said that one's education is not complete without a study of comparative religion." Nothing we've said here indicates that such study, when presented objectively as part of a secular program of education, may not be affected consistently with the First Amendment. The Interfaith Center of New York therefore joins with diverse religious leaders, educators, policymakers, and the Supreme Court in calling upon the New York City Council to adopt Resolution 95 and support religious diversity education in our public schools. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Before I begin, I would like to thank you Chair Rita Joseph, Ms. Shahana Hanif, and the co-sponsors of Resolution 95, for which I'm here to show my support. My name is Yara Takat. I'm 17 years old and a student at the Bronx High School of Science, and I've been attending NYC DOE public schools for my entire life. I grew up going to the mosque, fasting during Ramadan, and confused why I had to skip school for Eid until I was in the second grade, when it finally became a holiday on the school calendar. I grew up learning about Christmas and Hanukkah during the holiday season in my class, making ornaments and dreidels, and seeing my friends confidently show off their first communion dresses, and confused, why are they wearing wedding dresses? I grew up fortunately that my parents would explain to me what these events and holidays meant for the people celebrating and why they celebrated, for example, like first communions, impartially when I asked. Others, however, have been evidently less fortunate than me in this experience, where it is clear that their parents or guardians have projected prejudices against the groups being asked about instead. I was in the first grade when I received a death threat from a classmate. It was a small class of 14 kids, including myself, and I was the only Muslim. Others knew because I was absent on Eid and asked the teacher, why didn't we have any activity or lesson on this holiday? My holiday? My classmates told me, I'm going to come to your house at night and murder you because you're a terrorist. I remember this vividly only because of what happened after. I stared at him blankly and confused. I responded, sorry, my parents won't let you. I can only have sleepovers with my girl cousins, because I didn't know what the word murder meant at the time. Later that day, as my mom was paying for a parking ticket after doctor's appointment, I asked her what that word meant. Murder. I remember how shocked she was that her little baby was asking what such a violent word meant, and what is engraved in my memory is the horror of the woman paying for her ticket beside us's face when I told my mom where I heard the word, because I knew what the word terrorist meant. We learned about it at the beginning of the year after school-wide moment of silence after 9/11. This event still plays in my mind. How could a child be so full of hate? My questions were answered a few years later by that very same kid. I was in the fourth grade when the 2016 presidential elections were taking place, and there was an increased presence of Islamophobia in the media and also my school. I was outside of my math class when he threatened that his cop father would deport my family back to Afghanistan because we caused 9/11. And this horrified me, not only because I was scared that my life as I knew it would change, but also because he'd send me to a country whose culture and languages were completely foreign to me, because my family is from India. My Muslim math teacher was within an earshot and dragged me to the dean's office, where I was called the next day for him to read me an apology letter, where he said that he wouldn't bully anyone for the rest of the year, and there was no additional action taken. I had exposure to the beauty of my faith because I practice it, but this boy's only exposure was what his parents were telling him my people were doing, what Fox News and the former president were promoting stereotypes of, and the five-minute lessons we learned on what happened during 9/11 at our school. Looking back on the circumstances, even after the toll it has taken me on how I accept my own culture and how I have confidence and pride in my own identity, it makes sense to me how a child could bring such thoughts to a school and project them onto others like me. When the one place we go to learn and be prepared to enter society will not teach us about the things we need to know about the diversity of the world that we live in, there is no question why religious and race-based hatred is so prevalent, not only in adults, but also in children, because the education that we receive is too little, too late. And this is why I, along with many other children who have experienced race-based, race and religious-based hatred like me, would receive such an incredible and so much better education if this resolution were adopted. Thank you.
Hello, and good afternoon, Chair Joseph. My name is...
Bring the mic a little closer. Go bring it.
Is that good? Perfect. Good afternoon. My name is Ariana Al-Hawi. I'm the Advocacy Program Coordinator at Muslim Community Network. Today, I'm here to testify on behalf of Sunita Bitwana from Hindus for Human Rights, who could not be here. So, the statement begins. The oldest Hindu text, the Rig Veda, includes the words, "Let noble thoughts come from all directions." The core of many Hindu traditions is an open-mindedness, an engagement with ideas, whether you agree with them or not. This also means an openness to a diversity of thought, belief. Many Hindu texts, including the Upanishads and the Bhagavad Gita, are presented as a dialogue between one person in the role of a teacher and the other in the role of a student. In the Gita, the teacher is Lord Krishna. A common prayer known to most Hindus, especially children, includes the line, "Be one for whom teacher is God." We see teachers as God, books and schools as sacred, the act of learning as sadhana, or an act of faith, and one of the four equally legitimate paths to the ultimate truth is yoga, the path of attaining knowledge. Clearly, education, teaching, and learning is central to Hindu life and practice. We recognize that culturally-affirming education on Hinduism is a critical need in New York City, which is home to a rapidly growing South Asian and Indo-Caribbean diasporic population. This resolution will help ensure Hindu students feel authentically represented in their schools and that their peers have a more robust and holistic understanding of our faith. Furthermore, a lack of basic education on religious diversity is one of the reasons why we've seen increases in hate crimes that target all religious minorities, and we must act swiftly to correct this and help support a pluralistic society where all New Yorkers feel safe. I feel emboldened and energized by the large contingent I see here today of faith and community leaders, and I'm proud to stand in solidarity with them in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Harmeet Ghorkamboj. I'm the Senior State Policy Manager at the Sikh Coalition. I'm honored to be here to testify in support of Resolution 95. As part of my work, I advocate for policies that ensure the inclusion and representation of all faiths and backgrounds in school curricula across the nation. In April, the Sikh Coalition published Where Are You Really From?, a national Sikh school climate report, our landmark survey-based study of Sikh students' experiences with bullying and other aspects of school life across the country. The survey found that 78% of Sikh youth, that's almost 8 in 10, reported experiencing behavior defined as bullying. One in 10 young Sikhs reported being bullied by teachers or staff, and more violent physical bullying was reported by Sikh boys who wore turbans or bhakas as articles of faith. The report also found a correlation between less inclusive schools and more bullying incidents, as well as a relationship between bullying and poorer mental health outcomes. We feel confident in two things. First, what is true for the youth of our community is surely true for the youth of other marginalized groups. And second, the most fundamental step to countering this problem of bias-based bullying must be through inclusive education. Resolution 95 ensures the development of a religious diversity curriculum to address the kinds of anti-religious hate that impact young Sikhs in New York City public schools. It also takes a proactive approach to addressing student safety and cultural competency by pushing for professional development for teachers. For these reasons, the Sikh Coalition is proud to support Resolution 95. Thank you.
Does New York City Public Schools currently collaborate with any of the organization, if at all?
Yes, we, at Tannenbaum, we've been doing professional development for teachers through the Office of School Safety, and I would say over the last three years, the numbers have been increasing, but we're, as you know, usually capped at about 30 teachers per session. So, at this rate, we'd never get to the kind of saturation that we would need, and we do need all organizations who are doing this work to be considered. So, we're not asking for any one of us to be considered, but to bear all of our work as foundation.
How many teachers have you trained so far? If it's only 30, how long for three? How many teachers have we trained?
I think over the last three years, it's been about 500 altogether.
Okay.
At Muslim Community Network, after the Hillcrisp incident, we have started collaborations with the New York City Public Schools for some optional programming on religious diversity within the Muslim context. It's been optional workshops, so we've had workshops where it has had as low as two people. Then, on June 6th, which was Professional Development Day, we had a 50-person Zoom room. So, I would say up to now, we've probably done workshops for about like 80 to 90 people.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just to add, the Interfaith Center of New York does not have the same kind of, I think, relationship with DOE Central that Tannenbaum has been able to develop, but we have often worked with individual teachers, you know, in public, private, and faith-based schools, to help to lead site visits to local houses of worship for their students, to bring sometimes faith leaders into the classroom for conversation with students, but that's more on a kind of ad hoc basis with individual teachers. And then, we've also had a number of DOE teachers over the years participate in our Summer Institute, which is open to teachers from throughout the United States, but we always have a good number of DOE teachers in the room as well.
How long is your Summer Institute for?
It's a three-week program. It actually, the next one starts on July 8th. We've done, this is going to be the seventh running of the institute coming up in this July, and each time, we work with a group of 25 teachers from all over the U.S., again, you know, a good number local, but also nationwide, and it's a very intensive program to train them to do a better job teaching about religious diversity.
Are you doing any advocacy about curriculum at the state level?
Yes. The Sikh Coalition is part of the REACH Coalition that is advocating for an AA-NHPI-inclusive curriculum at the state level. It is just a small part of the education work that we do. We've been advocating for this legislation for the last two years. Unfortunately, it did not pass again this year, but we are continuing our efforts and also engaging with the New York State Education Department about ways that we can guarantee that AA-NHPI communities are included in state curricula. I also wanted to add that the Sikh Coalition has worked closely with principals and with teachers in South Richmond Hill and South Ozen Park to share professional development trainings and Sikh awareness trainings for teachers, staff, and students.
As far as the state level, we have started talking to Assembly members to, we've started working on a draft of a legislation, on a state legislation for religious diversity curriculums, similar to this, something that can actually be bound by law as far as NYCPS is concerned. I think right now, we're just like, we want to gain the support of the city council as well, to like, kind of go into that state legislation with support from our city officials, but that is something that's on the works with an Assembly member who, we're working with his Legislative Director in order to... in order to fine-tune the drive, language.
I would just add that already existing within the state regulations, within the Department of Education, within the social studies standards and the language arts standards, our guidance around teaching about religious diversity. So in some instances, we're trying to legislate what already exists.
And if I may add very briefly, I think Mark's comment highlights the importance of professional development for teachers in this area because the standards are there from the regions that students need to learn X, Y, and Z about religious diversity. But I know from years of experience working with teachers, many of them are afraid to touch the topic because they are misinformed about constitutional issues. As I said in my remarks, teaching about religion in public schools is clearly okay, but not all teachers or administrators are aware of that. And they're also frankly afraid of parent or community backlash if they say something wrong. So teachers need support, professional development, and encouragement from the city council, DOE on down, in order to make what's already there in the region's standards a reality in New York classrooms.
One last comment. I was just gonna say, I know Yara kind of touched on it, but at a very young age, like you were saying, teachers are reticent to ever touch the topic of religion within the classrooms. But some, like religious discrimination is pervasive at those ages of elementary and middle school. But I know from me and myself and from many students in New York City, you start learning about other religions once you're like in 10th, 11th, 12th grade. But by then, the damage is done for a lot of students by what they've heard, what they've experienced, sometimes even physical, as hijab pullings. And we've heard about numerous incidents in our school system since October 7th. So starting the younger, the better. Obviously, development of age-appropriate curriculum is necessary in order to make sure they can actually take in and comprehend the information. But it has to start from K. If it doesn't, then we're gonna risk pervasive incidents until the age of 14, 15, which is just kind of ridiculous.
Have you, could you use to... What are some of the resources New York City Public Schools can use to implement curriculum focused on religious diversity?
The Sikh Coalition is a 20-year-old organization, and our education team has an almost limitless array of lesson plans and curricula and trainings for teachers, administrators, staff. We have presented these materials to individual teachers and principals at schools. But we are also working very hard to connect with, you know, the bureaucracy of New York City Public Schools to be sure that particularly the Punjabi-speaking Sikh population with limited English proficiency is supported adequately. And to make sure that schools with high Sikh student populations also have the tools that they need to offer religious accommodations appropriately. We have had quite a bit of trouble, to be honest, with identifying and working with the appropriate folks in New York City Public Schools, Department of Education, to be sure that these initiatives can be widespread. We're making inroads here, working with the Office of Language Access and with the Respect for All team. But there's still a lot more work to do.
Religion doesn't leave you when you enter the New York City Public School system. Actually, it follows you through. It's under the impression that once you come in front of the New York City Public Schools or any type of building, your religious freedom is gone. Actually, it's not.
Can I, on the question of resources, I just want to point out two different things. First, there's a very healthy kind of community of educators and scholars nationwide working on these issues in public schools and other schools around the country. So there have been materials created by the American Academy of Religion, which is the professional association for college and university religion professors, materials created by the National Council for the Social Studies, by the First Amendment Center in DC. There's a whole laundry list of national organizations that have created either lesson plans or guidelines for teachers that can be used in K-12 settings. But then also, I would say more locally, the most valuable resource for New York teachers is the extraordinary religious diversity of the city itself. The Interfaith Center of New York has a particular interest in promoting community-based religious diversity education, which is kind of a fancy way of saying field trips to houses of worship. But field trips to houses of worship done in pedagogically and constitutionally appropriate ways to introduce students to their religiously diverse neighbors. So I think if educators are empowered to reach out to local faith communities and build those relationships, that's the most extraordinary resource they're ever gonna find.
I know you didn't think we had all these answers. We learned from the other people.
Plus, we've been doing this stuff for a long time.
I would just say, something occurred to me that, at a particular point, Tannenbaum had a contract number with the Department of Education. It was generally just an opportunity where, as a vendor, we could apply for services or services could be paid for us. But if there were a contract number for religious diversity education that could access all of the resources of the organizations represented here throughout our coalition and otherwise, then it would eliminate some of the negotiating of who do we go to and who's going to actually sign it. Because it's not centralized, not like anything is. But there's no one department that says religious diversity education is something we handle. It generally just happens to pop off. And then the other thing is that we are often providing that training at our own cost. The schools and/or teachers do not have any money to actually pay us. And as much as we are not-for-profits, we are for money and need to pay our people. And so that is really, you know, one of the resources. Also, I think it makes a difference if there is language or some kind of statement, not just from the chancellor, although I think it's incredibly important, and his testimony at Congress was fantastic, but the Department of Education at the state level and at the federal level. When there were instances several years ago, then Arne Duncan, the Secretary of Education, actually sent out a mandate from the State Department of Education around religious diversity education. And it was because of the rise, not just of any one group, but noticing the tide of peoples being discriminated against and acts of violence against them. So getting that level of attention, I think, makes it easier. And one other asset are parents. Unfortunately, a lot of parents end up coming into school to either defend their children or defend their faith. And there's not an opportunity for just the exploration of the tradition from an individual lived experience. People are often just coming in to defend themselves. So I think that a resource that would be useful would be to restructure the conversation about what our intention is and what our goal is. We're not just trying to avoid hate crimes, and we're not just trying to respond in the moment to who's being targeted at the moment. We're really talking about the kind of society we want to live in in New York City and how we're educating young people to participate in that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all. The next panel is Ajivanta Moreno, Khulsum Tapal, Japreet Singh, and Leila Hay. You may begin your testimony.
Okay, good evening, Chair Rita Joseph. Thank you so much for your time and scheduling us in for this hearing today. Just, my name is Ajivanta Moreno. I'm the advocacy program manager at Muslim Community Network. But I'll be reading a statement from our partners at the Armenian-American Action Network, written by Dr. Suzie Abijan and Sophia Armin and Christine Sajin. They couldn't be here today, but they've signed on and sent this over. So Armenian-American Action Network proudly joins community organizations, advocates, and stakeholders in calling for the passage of New York City Council Resolution Number 0095. As an Armenian-American civil rights organization dedicated to uplifting the rights and representation of all people, we recognize the urgent need for an educational curriculum that centers religious diversity for our youth in our schools. RES Number 95 is a bold and imperative measure that would compel the New York City Department of Education to implement a curriculum across all grade levels that emphasizes religious diversity. Additionally, it mandates professional development opportunities focused on religious diversity for educators. This initiative is a crucial step towards ensuring our educational environment generally reflects and respects the rich mosaic of beliefs and traditions that constitute our city and society at large. An educational curriculum that highlights religious diversity would not only enhance students' academic experience, but also equip them with the cultural competence necessary to thrive in our diverse and interconnected world. Educators equipped with professional development on this crucial topic will be better prepared to handle diverse classrooms and foster an environment of mutual respect and understanding. We urge the New York City Council to pass RES Number 95, setting a transformative precedent for educational systems nationwide to follow. In today's climate, where intolerance and discrimination are alarmingly prevalent, it is more important than ever that young people and educators feel represented and safe within our schools. Religious diversity is a fundamental pillar of our community that must be vigorously protected. Armenian Action Network is honored to advocate for the passage of RES Number 95. This resolution represents a significant stride towards rectifying historical and systemic injustices in our city and our country and improving the lives of children, educators, and working families in New York. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Hi, thank you so much Chair Joseph for your time. My name is Khulsum Tapal. I lead the education policy work at the Coalition for Asian-American Children and Families, CACF. As an organization fighting for API children and families, we stand united with our community to advocate for the future of our children and the quality of their education. At CACF, we know that exclusion from curriculum has contributed to longstanding erasure and is a root cause of violence and harassment towards historically marginalized communities. This historic and present erasure has created a seemingly endless cycle of violence and hate incidents both inside and outside the classroom. As a coalition with a 90-plus org membership, reflective of our diverse communities within the API diaspora, the intersectionality between various identities is not lost on us. We know that so many API communities are subject to discrimination not only for the color of their skin or the facial attributes they may have, but also for the religious community they may belong to or presume to belong to. It's why we are urgently calling for the passing of Resolution 95 and calling for a religious diversity curriculum. Curriculum void of religious diversity at best has detrimental impacts on the confidence and identity development of students belonging to specifically religious minority communities, and at worst fuels malicious stereotypes and misunderstandings that can lead to bullying, hate crimes, and violence. We know that students are experiencing bullying at alarming rates, which is why in addition to the passing of this resolution, we are in support of Intro 266, which calls for the creation of a bullying prevention task force. CACF is proud to have our Asian-American Student Advocacy Project, or ASAP, a youth leadership program for Asian-American Pacific Islander youth from across New York State, or sorry, New York City. Our ASAPers have shared with the city council time and time again how important it is for schools to foster safe environments and work intentionally to address bullying, which manifests in multiple forms, including microaggressions, perpetuating the model minority myth, and limited language access alongside many other issues. For months, ASAPers have been testifying right here in City Hall about the importance of funding the mental health continuum, which is now at risk of being completely cut, alongside ensuring the funding of social workers and school nurses in schools. Students have repeatedly shared testimonials right here about the lack of support for mental health issues, many of which are caused and furthered by bullying in schools. The creation of a bullying prevention task force inclusive of diverse student voices is an important step forward for identifying root causes and solutions necessary to address the growing mental health and bullying crisis in schools. So we ask you to please act with urgency to pass both the Resolution 95 as well as Bill 266 as an essential step to advancing more inclusive schools. Thank you.
Namaste, Assalamualaikum, Shalom. Wa gurujee kha khalsaa, wa gurujee kifateh. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, council members, staff, guests, and my fellow coalition partners. My name is Japneet Singh, and I am representing the Sikh community. It has been a very tough few years for our community. My community has been a victim of senseless hate time and time again. Just a few months ago, a hate-based assault resulted in the death of an innocent elderly, Jasmeer Singh. He was brutally attacked right in front of his wife following a road rage incident. The result, a broken family and a mourning diaspora. A few short days before that disgusting attack, there was another victim, a young 19-year-old teen who was riding the bus on his way to Sunday service. He was punched three times, and his dastard, which is a turban, was ripped off his head. While he was told, "In America," and I quote, "in America, you don't wear this." The result, a young man who came to this country with hopes to pursue the American dream and escape the dangers of an unstable society, now left disappointed and traumatized for the rest of his life. These were just two accounts. I can give you countless more stories and experiences of hate my community has dealt with in the last few decades. But one thing, in dealing with these hate crimes and working with our community partners, I have learned is that education is the only way to address hate as roots. This is why I am testifying in favor of Council Resolution 0095, which will help us combat hate crimes before they even take place. In an era where hate crimes continue to plague our society, it's essential to understand how religious education can help mitigate these incidences by promoting tolerance, understanding, and unity. You see, the battle against hate we as Sikhs have to fight here in New York City opens up a lot of old wounds. Forty years ago, there was a mass genocide that took place against the Sikh community carried out by the government of India. Tens of thousands of Sikhs were brutally murdered based on their articles of faith and name. It is why my father left everything behind to come to America. But who would have thought that similar hate would follow them here as well? Growing up, I was very disconnected with my faith. I was embarrassed to tell people I was Punjabi and Sikh. I didn't even tie a turban because I was scared of what people might think. And my fear turned into trauma when I constantly saw my turban-tying friends having to deal with being called towelhead and terrorists or Osama bin Laden. This is the reality for so many kids and even adults out there, not only for my faith, but other faith groups as well. But I can't help but to think what kind of society we'd have if my generation had the opportunity to actually learn about these quote-unquote terrorists, their history, their culture, their values. Maybe we could have saved the lives. Maybe we could have saved the lives we have lost over the years due to hate. Maybe we could have helped create a more tolerant and understanding classroom. You all look like some cool council members. I know Rita Joseph is, because we partied together a little bit at a colleague's wedding. I'm sure you follow culture and music, but I don't know if you guys know of an artist named Diljit Desanj. I think Council Member Krishna or Hanif might do. But for those who haven't heard of him, I'm most certain you have heard of Jimmy Fallon from The Tonight Show. Diljit Desanj, who is a very big Punjabi artist from India, became the first Punjabi artist to make an appearance on The Tonight Show last night. To put it into perspective, he is like the Punjabi version of Drake or Taylor Swift. He appeared in full traditional outfit and a turban in front of a very diverse audience who may have never heard of him. What is my point of bringing him up? Well, definitely check out his music for starting, right? I'm sure you'll enjoy it. But it was a very big moment for the Punjabi community, the Sikh community, the South Asian community. It helps start a conversation. It helps us ask ourselves and encourages us to do research on the unknown. Likewise, if we put our kids in a position to learn the unknown, do their own research, and actually draw well-educated conclusions about other faiths and cultures that have historically been left out of textbooks or have been inaccurately cited, we can move towards a more inclusive and just society. towards a more inclusive and just society. This is why this resolution is so important. We would be taking a proactive step in ensuring we can tackle hate at its roots. We are hopeful that you will help us in this fight against hate and give hope to communities that have for far too long been victims of senseless violence. And definitely, Madam Chair, watched yesterday night's Tonight Show. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
I'm sure you did. I'm sure you did. Just wanted to share a little context. Thank you for that, thank you. My professor was Professor Singh at Marymount Manhattan College, so I always had classmates who wore turbans. And we just hung out, we were kids. So I think it's also important, as you said, we start very young in learning about love and tolerance and compassion more than anything in empathy, so that's important. As a Haitian American, we carried our burden as well. We were called AIDS carriers, and that's what propelled me into this kind of work. I was 19-years-old organizing my first rally against FDA that said we were AIDS carriers. But what our defining moment was for us, it was when Waikkef Jean came to the Grammys with his Haitian flag wrapped around him. And then made sure that, we were like, "We're good, okay to be Haitian." So I can definitely relate to what's happening, so that's why it was important for me to listen to this as the education chair also, to know that it starts, I've always said that, it starts in school and it also starts at home. So we gotta have that tough conversations. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you Chair Joseph and members on the Committee on Education for holding this hearing and giving the Asian American Federation the opportunity to testify. I am Leila Hay, a Policy and Advocacy Intern at AAF, where we proudly represent the collective voice of more than 70-member nonprofits serving 1.5 million Asian New Yorkers. Today, I'm here to show my support for Resolution 95, sponsored by Councilmember Hanif. In 2021, AAF launched our Hope Against Hate campaign to address a recent surge in anti-Asian violence. We surveyed 400 Asian New York City residents about their experiences with hate crimes, and 36% of respondents suggested that ethnic studies and cross-cultural events would be most effective in preventing anti-Asian bias incidents. It is clear that education and multicultural exchange are crucial in preventing discrimination and fostering safety, tolerance, and understanding. Education combats stereotypes and creates an inclusive environment for youth of all ethnic and religious backgrounds. As a city that touts values of progress and multiculturalism, we must ensure that educational institutions actually reflect and uplift the identities of their students. As a born and raised New Yorker, I'm so fortunate to have grown up with classmates from incredibly diverse backgrounds. It taught me empathy and respect for identities different from my own. However, not all students have this experience and not all students feel safe and supported being themselves at school. I grew up in a Buddhist household, yet I often felt uncomfortable talking about my religion at school. I feared my peers would not understand my family's beliefs. I felt like an outsider. Looking back now, I realize that I was far from alone, and I know that I would have benefited greatly from a curriculum on religious diversity. I would have felt more comfortable sharing that part of myself, and I would have had the opportunity to appreciate my classmates' religious and cultural practices. No young person should ever feel discriminated against, ostracized, or bullied for their religious identity. It is imperative to pass Resolution 95 to establish a culturally sensitive curriculum and develop school practices around religious diversity. This initiative is not merely about curriculum development, it's about dispelling ignorance and preventing our city from becoming a vehicle for hate. Thank you for allowing AAF to testify on this critical subject, and we look forward to continuing this work with all of you.
Thank you, I have a quick question. How does New York City Public Schools partner with your communities to ensure that students feel safe and supported, and what other supports are needed?
I'll start for MCN. I know Hussein touched a little bit earlier, but in addition to the diversity education workshops that we do in New York City Public Schools, we're also like being called in to do mitigations. For instance, at James Madison High School, we're working with administrations there to make sure they had a prayer room, working with the different MSA and cultural groups to ensure there's understanding between the different student groups on campus there, as well as also doing hate crime prevention workshops in New York City Public Schools, teaching them the difference between hate and bias incidents, how and where to report, and providing the data on those anti-religious hate crimes and how they can be better community members to those with different faiths.
The experience that we've had, you know, I know someone mentioned that they've been called in to like, I'm from the Richmond Hills, I live in South Ocean Park, and we actually, I reached out to my own high school that I graduated from, and there's actually a big wall that I've noticed, like, you know, we offered to come in and do panel discussions, hate crime workshops, just come in and talk to the kids. So, you know, I remember I was talking to one of the AVPs, and he's like, you know, the leadership just doesn't want to do it. And that was, I found that kind of shocking because John Adams isn't one of the, you know, let's say, best high schools out there, but it does have one of the biggest Sikh communities, Muslim communities that attend that school, so I would think that they would benefit from it. So when I saw that kind of hesitance, I'm like, you know what, like, there's more work that can be done. And in the opposite side, my middle school has been open to it, so they called us in this past April, which is when we celebrate Vaisaki, which is the creation of our religion, the Kalsa. We were able to go in and speak over the loudspeaker and just educate the students on like what this holiday means, so we're hopeful to expand upon that in the future as well.
I can speak on one aspect. So I know hidden voices has been brought up a few times throughout today, and we had the pleasure of working with the DOE at various points, whenever they had capacity, whenever we could, you know, to support with the creation of the hidden voices, specifically the AAPI hidden voices that was rolled out earlier this year. And one of the things that we noticed, and we've been in conversation with a lot of community members, educators, parents, students, and also with DOE itself, right? And one of the common thread issues is that even though this curriculum, this hidden voices resource guide has been developed and it's published, it's available online, it's not necessarily accessible because people don't know it exists, and the DOE does not have capacity or funding or, you know, all of these things, and maybe there's not prioritization, you know, whatever the case may be, to actually follow through on implementation. So there, to the extent of implementation, it was like, okay, we printed out all these resource guides, we sent 10 to each school, every school in New York City, and the principal signed off on it, and that's kind of the end, like, that's what we know happened. And so there's no really understanding of how principals are using it, if principals actually told the educators that these resource guides are available, there's like no data on those things. So there's this aspect of, you know, curriculum being developed, but then also what does it look like to actually implement said curriculum? Also, a resource guide is very different from a lesson plan, and these sorts of things are really important when talking about this.
So the implementation hasn't been done. And it's also important, and I always say that for curriculums, even the books, representation matter, right? We have to start creating books where students see themselves. They see themselves, they accept themselves, and they've been seen because society tell them one thing. And we gotta make sure we're supporting them in that way. When you see yourself in books, it's different. My library always had students, I had a huge amount of students who wore hijab, and all of my books made sure that there were girls in my library with books, there were books with students, with girls with hijab. If they see that, it's like, oh, somebody sees me. So it's important, I even have a mule in my district called Hijabi Girls. So it's important because I represent a huge diverse community, I'm trying to meet the needs of all the communities, and as an educator, I always see that it's important for students to see themselves as well. So the curriculum is a great idea, but if it's somewhere in boxes, it's not serving the purpose that it was created for, right? So we gotta work on that. Thank you so much.
And to just add to what Kulsum said, while we're doing these workshops and presentations, they're just one-time workshops, so having the resolution passed and actually having the curriculum will help streamline the process and create a more like centralized structure for us to be able to come in as a coalition and have like meetings with the DOE and set out like, these are the guidelines, right? These are the, you know, the lesson plans, these are the things that we have used previously in professional development trainings with educators that have worked and we've seen work in other states as well. So, yeah, looking for...
But there should be ongoing conversation as the world changed so rapidly, so the conversation has to be ongoing. It can't happen because we're in crisis mode. It has to be ongoing, whether there's a crisis or not, these conversations need to constantly happen as a reminder, as we all live in this big world, we all gotta get along, we all have to coexist with each other and interact with each other, not just coexist and don't know anything about each other, but getting to know each other, and it could be the simplest things. Why do you do this? Why do you wear that? Why do you eat this and versus that? So it could be the simple little exchange that can make a huge difference.
Thank you so much.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
I really like one of your bills that you had mentioned in the beginning with the newspaper, just to expand upon that, some of my nieces and nephews now are getting old, but they, now they're in schools, and one thing when I was in high school and even middle school, we didn't have no extracurriculars in my high school and my middle school. So when I started college, I was so looking forward to just joining student government, right? Because I knew there's an outlet. I feel like, you know, just to take that newspaper idea even further, maybe other extracurriculars that kids can participate in so they can get involved with maybe MSAs at schools that don't have it, or, you know, kabbats, or Sikh associations, whatever it may be, like, when we give our kids the liberty to start something, they are much more independent and also much more well-versed on what's outside in the real world at an earlier age.
That's one of the bills, actually, to talk about the after-school and the clubs, what kind of clubs, and kids can create clubs in schools, right? To Sikh organization in the middle school can create Sikh, so they could be dialogue and communication among their classmates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the in-person panelists. If there's anyone else who wishes to testify in person, please make your way to the Sergeant at Arms desk in the back. We will now hear from our virtual panelists. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the Sergeant at Arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the Sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. First up is Nelson Ma, followed by Faran Sharif, Samir Tassoon, and Rita Taleb and Hiba Khalil.
Nelson, you may begin.
Thank you Chair Joseph and the rest of the members of the Education Committee for the opportunity to testify regarding Intro 266. My name is Nelson Ma, and I am a senior staff attorney in the Education Rights Project at Legal Services NYC, the largest provider of civil legal services in the country. Thank you Chair Joseph and members of the City Council for your continued support of our overall mission to bring justice for low-income residents throughout New York City. Today, I would like to provide some comments on Intro 266 regarding the creation of a task force on the prevention of bullying, which is sponsored by you, Chair Joseph. Bullying is an issue we see quite often at Legal Services NYC with our clients, especially with those students who are facing long-term suspensions. Often, these students are suspended for actions they engaged in while trying to stop being bullied. Moreover, the issue of bullying prevention is an issue that I have a very personal connection with, as I was a frequent target of bullies at school and in my neighborhood, which was almost entirely white, when my family moved in and essentially integrated the Queens neighborhood in the mid-'70s. My personal experience ingrained a lifelong commitment in me to confront and stop bullying. This is reflected in my work at Legal Services NYC, where we have worked closely with community partners to address bullying by helping to found the Bronx Anti-Bullying Coalition, which has been working over the last almost six years now, producing annual resource spheres to educate community members on how they could help prevent and stop bullying, and also through the work advocating for healing-centered practices to be adopted in all New York City public schools. With respect to Intro 266, Legal Services NYC believes it is important, it is an important goal to convene a task force to develop a plan to prevent bullying, given how significant bullying is an issue in our public schools. Could I just wrap up? Is that all right?
Go ahead, you can wrap up.
Thank you. Specifically, the bill would probably benefit from a couple of changes regarding the definition in Section 1A. We think it would be important to include a reference to one's appearance. Too often, in the clients that we have worked with, they were targets of bullying based on their appearance, not necessarily tied to a protected class. Some students were targeted simply because they weren't wearing the right brand of shoes or there was something about their appearance that stood out from others. In addition, the two public meetings proposed in the bill in Section 1F, the task force should be directed to convene a listening session with agencies, organizations, or community groups involved in the prevention of bullying. Many groups and organizations are working tirelessly and at times effectively to reduce bullying in our schools, and they should be able to share that knowledge and experience with the full task force. Thirdly, the bill should require the report to include an analysis of root causes of bullying and the impacts of bullying on all individuals in the school community, especially those individuals who engage in the bullying. I think oftentimes, when we talk about bullying, the focus is hyper-focused on the individual who's the victim or the target of the bullying. But given our experiences addressing bullying in schools, educators need to have a better understanding of those students who engage in bullying in order to develop an effective plan to minimize those behaviors. And I did want to just finish by commenting on something that Dr. Davison mentioned earlier in her testimony. There is a disconnect in some of her testimony and what we see directly on the front lines. A lot of times, when our clients in these suspension hearings, when the suspension's been upheld, even though they were engaging in actions to defend themselves at times from bullying, they are not given the opportunity to transfer. Dr. Davison talked a little bit about that all students who have experienced bullying have that right to transfer, and that's not necessarily the case. If that student is, who's just merely defending themselves, is then suspended for engaging in that defense of oneself, we definitely believe these students should be treated with restorative practices and healing-centered practices as opposed to facing more punitive disciplinary responses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Faran Sharif?
You may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much to City Councilwoman Rita Joseph and to the entire City Council Education Committee for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Faran Sharif. I am a recent graduate from Baruch College, a constituent liaison for the New York State Senate, and I am a proud product of the New York City Public School Education System, having graduated from elementary school PS99, IS250 for middle school, and Thomas Edison CTE High School. I am here today to testify in favor of passing Resolution 0095. If there is anything that I have learned from my time spent in this New York City Public Education System, it is the beautiful diversity that Queens has to offer. From the first time I became friends with a Sikh turban classmate in kindergarten to the times I sang Hanukkah songs at PS99 for the holidays, I was surrounded with religious diversity. During my time at the public education system, I was personally never attacked or faced racism from being an immigrant family, from being from an immigrant family or being from a Muslim family. However, while I was in middle school, I remember that that was the first time I was exposed to online content that was filled with hatred, racism, and Islamophobia after having received my first fall. I cannot and will not ever forget being exposed as a child to comments such as, to the online content such as that Muslims are terrorists or that we Muslims don't belong in this country. This was the Islamophobia and hatred that inspired me to rise up on the path of... This was the Islamophobia and hatred that inspired me to rise up on the path of leadership so that our community has representation to counter these false Islamophobic narratives. The reason why I mentioned this story of my past is to sympathize with any child here in New York City or the public education system who has faced incidents of Islamophobia or antisemitism or any other sort of racism or hate crimes, because this was the-
Yeah, time has expired.
-content that I was exposed to.
Please wrap up.
Okay, yes. So, just to wrap up, I'm advocating and calling upon the Education Committee and other councilmembers to take on Resolution Ninety-Five because in the midst of hatred and animosity, in the midst of extremists taking advantage of our high emotions and divisions, the City Council must step in to ensure that our students are aided with the education to withstand the rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia so that there is a common ground and understanding between all students and groups regardless of religion. We desperately need Resolution Ninety-Five to pass the City Council so that we may have religious diversity education, because this is the only solution that can help and protect students from being the victims of racism, antisemitism, or Islamophobia, and protect them from being taken advantage of from extremist groups who wish to divide our communities here in New York City. Thank you once again.
The next person, Samira Tassoon.
My name is Samira Tassoon. I am sixteen years old, and I'm a junior at the Young Women's Leadership School of Queens, and I support Resolution Ninety-Five because there are a lot of misconceptions that can be cleared up through this education, and the school environment would be much more welcoming, welcoming and understanding instead of normalizing prejudice and bullying out of ignorance. Such as in middle school, a Chinese classmate of mine asked me to call a Korean classmate, Kim Jong Un, and I complied with, out of second thought, because I didn't understand the implications be, behind that comment. So, learning more about each other, our cultures and religions is extremely es- essential to avoid situations like that. Thank you to everyone here. Thank you, Councilmember Hanif, and the Chair of the Education Community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person, Rita Taleb.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members of the Education Committee. My name is Rita Taleb, and I'm the former Community Education Program Coordinator for the Muslim Community Network, a nonprofit dedicated to redefining and shaping the Muslim experience in NYC and the United States through community education, leadership development, and advocacy. In her book, Cultivating Genius: An Equity Framework for Culturally and Historically Responsive Literacy, Dr. Goldie Muhammad shares a powerful four-part framework for cultivating intellectual excellence in our students. First is identity development. Second is skill development. Third is intellectual development. And fourth is criticality. This framework ensures students, quote, "capacity to read, write, and think in the context of understanding power, privilege, and oppression," unquote. Dr. Muhammad argues that, quote, "As long as oppression is present in the world, young people need pedagogy that nurtures criticality," unquote. Therefore, I can't think of a more urgent time than now to pass Resolution Ninety-Five. Resolution Ninety-Five calls for K, K through twelve appropriate religious diversity education curriculum in NYC, religious sensitivity, sensitivity training for educators, alerts to parents in the event of anti-religious hate and discrimination, and including data on anti-religious hate crimes in annual school reports. The Muslim community overstands how exclusion from curriculum has contributed to longstanding erasure, violence, harassment, and bullying both inside and outside the classroom. My esteemed colleagues have shared important data on this already. Imam Ali once said that there is no wealth like education and no poverty like ignorance. Today, I'm proud to be a part of this strong intersectional coalition of organizations who deeply care about inclusive education that will only further cultivate the genius in our students for the reasons our coalition-
Your time has expired.
I wholeheartedly support Resolution Ninety-Five and urges committee to pass it. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Next person is Hiba Khalil.
You may begin.
If there's anyone else on Zoom who wishes to testify, please use the raise hand feature. No hands? No hands? Thank you to, to all our panelists. This concludes the public testimony and our hearing for today.